Welcome everyone here today to Budget Hearing Session Number Seven as we conclude the hearings of the Functional Area Review portion of Phase Two of the Council's review of the Executive's Recommended Budget. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Calling the roll, Mr. Jones. Mr. Jones is absent at the moment. Ms. Brown?
Here.
Mr. Hairston?
Here.
Ms. Simon? Ms. Simon is absent at the moment. Mr. Brady?
Here.
Mr. Greenspan?
Here.
Mr. Miller?
Here.
Mr. Germana?
Here.
Mr. Gallagher?
Here.
Mr. Schron?
Here.
And Ms. Conwell?
Here.
You have a quorum.
Thank you. I just want to remind everybody today, we're going to hear from three functional areas, the Court of Appeals, the County Prosecutor, and the Adams Board will be in this morning session. In this afternoon's session, we'll hear from the Executive Chief of Staff. As customary, we always have public comment related to the agenda. Just to remind everybody in attendance, those who are speaking, that public comment is limited to three minutes. And with that, Madam Clerk, if you please begin the public comment.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Greg Popovich.
Good morning, members of Council. My name's Greg Popovich. I'm the Court Administrator for the Common Police Court. And I'm here today on behalf of the judges, the staff, and Judge John Russo, the administrative judge, who wished he could be here today, but he was not able to due to the time change, to ask all of you to not reduce the budget of the Adams Board. We partner with the Adams Board on a number of different programs to make sure that people that are inflicted with mental illness and addiction are treated fairly in our court system, that they receive treatment rather than incarceration. If the Adams Board budget is cut, it could also mean cut in programs that we at the Court use to treat people of mental illnesses and addictions. This is not only the right thing to do, to not cut this budget, but it makes good business sense not to cut this budget. If you do, programs that we partner with the Adams Board with, again, could be cut, and people could spend more time in jail as a result of that. Also, the cuts can also mean reduction in our drug court treatment options, as well as our mental health court treatment options. And people such as Jeff, who was offered treatment instead of incarceration in our system, could not have done what he was able to do. He now operates four halfway houses, and now is a productive member of society. He created jobs rather than going to prison. So I ask you again, please not to reduce this budget. It makes good business sense not to, and again, it is the right thing to do. Thank you.
Thank you. Madam Clerk?
Next speaker, Al Porter Jr.
My name is Al Porter Jr., Black on Black Crime Incorporated President. And the reason that I am definitely speaking, I want to thank the Creator, and I thank you all for allowing me to speak, is because, right now, in our community, as so many of you all know, you have adults murdered, you have children murdered. But a lot of these times, you don't have the resources, and you definitely don't have the people there to be able to go out there and speak to the youth. You don't have enough people to speak to the adults, the grieving parents, the ones who've lost their loved ones. When that happens, it leads to a downward spiral, a spiral of mental health problems. It leads to a spiral of drug dependency, alcoholism, and a whole lot of different issues. These are a lot of things that my group encounters. With that being said, I definitely ask you all very humbly to continue to fund the Adams Board. We need to have outlets where we can refer people to, to be able to send people to, to get the correct help that's needed. I can call on certain colleagues, like Brother Schron, who has a business in the inner city, or other colleagues such as Sister Conwell, Brother Hairston, who's been out there, and they've had to deal with some of the certain ills that I'm speaking on. And if I could be so bold as to say that there is nothing more serious as commodity in our community as the people. And if we can continue to fund some losing sports teams facilities for billionaires, then we should be able to put the money into our valuable resources that's needed each and every day. Again, my name is Al Porter from Black on Black Crime Incorporated, and I would just like to ask you all definitely to not allow a crime of short-seeing, and short-sight, and short-vision on our community and the valuable resources. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next speaker is James McCafferty.
Thank you for having me back again. I guess you do go back from the future. I'm Jim McCafferty. I represent the Coalition for Cogahoga Kids, which is Applewood, Belfair, Beach Brook, Parmadele, Guidestone, Berea Children's Home, and Cleveland Christian Home. Thank you again for listening to us. We think this is a particularly bad time in history to cut the Adams Board. We have an opiate epidemic in this county that is unlike anything we've had before. It's as prevalent in the suburbs that you serve as it is in the inner city. The difference is, those individuals in the suburbs go through their private insurance, then they turn to the public system for help. We have unprecedented violence in our communities. We have a problem between the police and mentally ill and drug addicted, and how we deal with them, that the Adams Board can help with. We believe they need the resources to do this. There was a recommendation of a possible program between Adams Board and the county to step kids down from institutional care. We wholeheartedly support a program like that. Those children are in our buildings, are in our institutions. There's nothing better than getting a young person out of care, back into the community. But it's a risky business. It can't be done as a cost savings. It also can't be done by just providing Medicaid services. These kids need wraparound services for a long period of time, where you're in the home, working with them, to keep them safe, keep them supported, keep them stabilized. These kids do present a safety risk in the community. If they're off their meds, or they're not getting counseling, they're not stable. So we ask that that start as a pilot. We think it's a wonderful idea. We hope that the project is not dead. But it can't start with hundreds of kids. It has to start small, so we figure out what we're doing. In closing, I'd like to point out something. If you look in this audience, there are lots of nonprofit agencies here. Each of us is a Cogahoga County agency. We work with Cogahoga County Government, Juvenile Court, Common Police Court, the Adams Board, Children and Family Services, Justice Affairs, to serve the kids and families of our community. Our employees are also residents of Cogahoga County, and they're taxpayers of Cogahoga County. When we have a revenue reduction, the only way we control costs is by downsizing our employment, which means we're laying off, or we're furloughing, Cogahoga County residents and taxpayers. And for each of us, it isn't one cut. We're getting cut by multiple agencies. So again, I ask in closing that you consider seriously the decision, tough decision, that you have with the Adams Board budget, and consider restoring, if not all, that major part of it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Lon Herman?
Good morning, Chair Greenspan, members of County Council. My name is Lon Herman, and I am the founding director of the Best Practices in Schizophrenia Treatment Center at Northeast Ohio Medical University. I'm also the chair of the Northeast Ohio Steering Committee of the Mental Health and Advocacy Addiction Coalition, and I serve on the MAC State Board. I'm glad to say we have a number of MAC members with us today, including Sisters of Charity System, Visiting Nurse Association, Far West Center, Frontline Services, May Dugan Center, NAMI of Greater Cleveland, the Adam Board, Center for Community Solutions, the Center for Cognition and Recovery, and the Hitchcock Center for Women. The county budget proposes many important investments, including infant mortality, workforce development, and early childhood education. All of this is done really with the goal of lifting people out of poverty. However, the outcomes you wish to achieve from these investments really won't be realized unless behavioral health is understood as integral to these systems. Cutting funds for behavioral health will sink people deeper into poverty. And that's why we really need to understand that treatment and services for mental health and addiction disorders are already part of the system that will raise people out of poverty, and they need to be included in these discussions as we move forward. Representing the people behind us, as I think was indicated earlier, are really important leaders, members of our community, exceptional individuals who work for and run organizations who do want to use the most innovative and effective services to help people in need. Unfortunately, there's often not enough funds to cover the transition costs needed to implement new evidence-supported services. I want to touch on the work that is being done to modernize and move these systems of care forward. That's work we do at the BEST Center. We work in collaboration with boards and agencies in Northeast Ohio and beyond to promote recovery and to improve the lives of individuals with schizophrenia by accelerating the adoption of evidence-supported and promising practices. We offer training and consultation, evaluation, and outreach activities to improve the capacity of these providers to offer systems that provide state-of-the-art care. However, the lack of funding to provide training and implementation of effective, evidence-based supported practices is one of the major obstacles we face in the world of behavioral health care. The Cogahoga County Adams Board has really been a leader in partnering with the BEST Center and behavioral health care providers in the county to ease transition costs associated with adopting these new practice models, which do promote recovery and offer important possibilities to lift those with serious behavioral health needs out of poverty. And let me provide you with a specific example. The BEST Center has partnered with Catholic Charities and the Adam Board to bring in an effective early intervention program for individuals experiencing an initial psychotic break. These are often individuals in their teens and early twenties, and treatment, as usual, is expensive and offers little hope of recovery. As a former elected official, I know the problems that you face in terms of being able to make important decisions associated with providing good care. However, I really think that it's important that you consider the funding that's necessary for the Board to ease transition costs, to have effective models like this, which allow three-quarters of the people enrolled in these programs to either work or go in school and maintain their lives in the community. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
Kelly DiLag.
Good morning, Chair Greenspan, Council President Brady, and members of County Council. My name is Kelly DiLag. I'm the president of Far West Center. We are a community mental health center located in Westlake, and serving the western and southern communities of Cogahoga County with behavioral health services. Or, in the words of one of our clients, "The brokest of the broke." I'm also chair of the Council of Agency Directors, a network of over forty nonprofit mental health and addiction services providers in Cogahoga County, many of whom are here in the audience today, many of whom you have or will be hearing from. We represent our Safety Net Care, Prevention, and Recovery Support Services, from children, infants, young families through older adults. Together, we are very concerned about a proposed seventeen percent reduction in funding to the Adams Board. This affects us and each of us directly. The County Council has certainly supported behavioral health funding in the past. For that, we thank you. You've also funded many of the field-leading initiatives launched by the Adams Board in partnership with providers and the community, and responsible for strengthening our system of care. For the coming year, we urge you to sustain behavioral health funding for the Adams Board at its current level, if not consider additional investments. Why? Our realities about Medicaid expansion. Without a doubt, Medicaid expansion has made health insurance available to thousands of county residents who can now access health and behavioral health services for the first time, or who can access care in any consistent or meaningful and integrated way. That is invaluable, but that's not the panacea. We are seeing some unintended developments emerge. For example, residents in our outer-ring communities are becoming the new faces of poverty. They do not qualify for Medicaid expansion, and in the health insurance marketplace, they cannot afford premiums, or ten thousand dollar a year deductibles, or any of the out-of-pocket expenses connected with health insurance. So they cannot and do not seek care. Our suburbs are not private. A client of our center said to us, "Yes, I had an insurance card. No, I couldn't afford to use it." In our center's service area, communities such as Berea, Middleburg Heights, and Lakewood show the fastest rates of growth in poverty in our region, and also among the fastest-growing areas using Safety Net services. Our reality is Medicaid covers treatment, not a continuum of care. Without a sturdy network of supports and care through the Adams Board and community partners, people with behavioral health problems will continue to sink deeper into poverty and need. On behalf of the CAD, thank you for investing in behavioral health.
Thank you. Madam Clerk?
Orlando Howard.
Good morning, Chair Greenspan, and members of County Council. My name is Orlando Howard, and I'm the manager of outpatient treatment services at Rosary Hall, St. Vincent Charity Medical Center. Founded in nineteen fifty-two, Rosary Hall has been at the forefront of treating alcoholism and drug addiction for more than sixty years. In fact, its founder, Sister Ignatia Gavin, worked hand-in-hand with Dr. Robert Smith after he co-founded Alcoholics Anonymous in Akron, Ohio. Today, Rosary Hall's innovative efforts continue to be fueled not only by decades of proven experience in treating more than sixty thousand men and women, but also by the compassion that is a hallmark of St. Vincent's Charity Medical Center. Today, I want to share with you how your investment in behavioral health over the last two years have made a real, meaningful impact in the lives of the people we serve. This has all been made possible by supporting existing programs and by using new investments to fuel, to fund, new initiatives. As you are aware, St. Vincent's Charity Medical Center provides inpatient detoxification and intensive outpatient treatment services, as well as psychiatric services. All of these services have been made possible by funding from the Adams Board of Cogahoga County. After Ohio's expansion of Medicaid, the mental health and addiction provider, provided community is facing a new crisis, that of lack of residential treatment beds. The Adams Board has set aside funding to help with this issue, for more help is needed. St. Vincent's Psychiatric Emergency Department and Rosary Hall routinely is without a bed to send our patients for services they desperately need. When I started at Rosary Hall in two thousand and seven, we had thirteen inpatient detoxification beds. We now have a total of twenty-seven inpatient beds, doubling the number of beds in only eight years. Of these twenty-seven beds, ninety percent of them are occupied with heroin-addicted individuals in their mid-twenty's. As you know, detox is only the first stage of a recovery program, and for many, if not all, of these addicted opiate addicts, residential inpatient treatment is the next phase of their recovery. It is vital that they are admitted directly from detox into residential treatment. The problem is, there are not enough residential treatment beds available when detoxification has been completed. The Adams Board of Cogahoga County has provided new services by funding residential programs and paving the way for these clients to obtain residential services. But with the continued rise in opiate addiction, more is still needed. In closing, a majority, if not all, of you have previously been supportive of providing funding for mental health and addiction treatment services. On behalf of Rosary Hall, St. Vincent Charity Medical Center, all of these patients we serve daily, we encourage you to provide additional investments for mental health and addiction treatment services. Behavioral health services strengthens the health in our country, our workforce, our children, and our families. Investing in these services is investing in our country's future. Thank you all.
Thank you. Madam Clerk?
Carol Negus.
Good morning, Councilwoman Greenspan, and members of the Cogahoga County Council. My name is Carol Negus, and I am Director of Nursing for Stella Maris, which is an addiction treatment and service provider here in Cogahoga County. We are one of the oldest addiction facilities in the Cogahoga County. We've been around for sixty-nine years, providing care for people all across this county. I'm here today because I want to share with you the work we are doing to combat addiction epidemics currently plaguing our communities. While the Adams Board funding has allowed us to bring more people in for treatment, the demand far outstrips our capacity to provide care. Stella Maris has a mixed detox facility for men and women, adult men and women. We also have an intensive outpatient program that has five therapeutic groups, including an opiate group, as well as a women's-specific group. We have a men's residential supportive housing that houses forty-six men. In the past year, we have serviced one thousand five hundred and thirty clients in Cogahoga County. The Adams Board has funded four hundred and thirty-four of those clients, which is a little less than a third of what we're bringing in. Our biggest challenge today is finding a place for them to go once we detox them, because there is no place to send them. So we detox them, and we end up having to send them back out on the street. The Adams Board has greatly helped us with this by funding a pilot project this year of a sober housing pilot, which allows us to send clients to sober houses in the community, opening up beds in our residential men's facility, allowing us to move people from our detox facility into the men's residential, providing a real continuity of care. So far this year, we have sent a hundred clients from the funding of the Adams Board to sober housing, and twenty-five of those clients came out of our men's residential dormitory. We actually have some sober houses in the community that are filled completely with men and women from, I mean, just men from Stella Maris, which provides a really great opportunity for people to get sober. We also have a, I just want to talk to you about what the need is right now. Our waitlist for clients coming into our detox facility, we have eighty-eight clients on the waitlist. Seventy-one of those clients are, have insurance, but the Adams Board will be funding probably twenty percent of those clients, even though they have insurance, because private insurance does not pay for inpatient opiate addiction treatment, detoxification. They only pay for ambulatory. We also have some, we also have what we call hold beds, that we are trying to get the Adams Board to help us pay for. Right now, Stella Maris is covering the cost of that. What they are, are beds that we hold people in our detox facility, waiting for a bed to open up at Matt Talbot or some other place, because there's no place to put them but back out on the street. So to cut the funding for the Adams Board would be really, really devastating to Stella Maris and all the work that we are doing here, and I ask that you please consider leaving their funding the way it is, because we really rely on them. Thank you very much for listening to me.
Thank you. Madam Clerk?
Susan Neff.
Good morning, Chair Greenspan, and members of County Council. My name is Susan Neff. I'm a licensed social worker, and I'm the executive director of Frontline Service. Two years ago, County Council appropriated additional funds from your Public Assistance Fund to support the treatment and services of mental health and addictive disorders. A portion of those funds were allocated by the Adams Board to expand our Child Mobile Crisis Team, creating a Child Response Team, a pilot project that Frontline Service operates. Today, I will share with you how your investment in behavioral health has impacted the youth and families in our community, and why we need that investment to continue. The two thousand and ten Cogahoga County Needs Assessment reveals that an estimated forty-seven thousand five hundred youth in our community are struggling with active mental health disorders. Of those, it is estimated that thirty-five percent, sixty-seven hundred youth between the ages of five and seventeen, are unserved. Not underserved, they are unserved. They are receiving no support, no services, which are so critical to anyone who is managing mental health issues. We knew as the provider of the Child Mobile Crisis Team that we were reaching only a fraction of those youth, and only for a short duration during the period of a crisis. We were missing opportunities to engage youth prior to a crisis, to help them avoid that experience and strengthen their own skills. Your commitment to behavioral health made it possible for us to hire additional staff, and we now have dedicated child clinicians available twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week. We respond to calls from family members, from friends, from teachers, from clergy, from youth, anyone who has a concern. And we outreach to homes, to schools, to detention centers, anywhere that we can connect with that youth and their family or guardian. We work with youth who are struggling, not in active crisis. This Child Response Team is able to work with youth who are not yet in crisis, not psychotic, they are not experiencing suicidal or homicidal ideations, but their behavior has changed, their mood, their functioning ability, and people are concerned about them. And so we get those calls. We work with the youth to identify what their risk is, and then to identify the most appropriate resources in the community that we can link them to, which will support their resiliency and help them develop coping skills that are essential to living with mental health Cuts to our mental health budget, our behavioral health budget, would jeopardize not only this program, but a number of critical programs that are now, that are now operating in this community. And so I urge you to give consideration to not only this initiative, but to other initiatives that are critical to our community, to our children, and to our overall county's health. I thank you for your time.
Thank you. Madam Clerk?
John Lissy.
I appreciate being able to address County Council this morning. My name's John Lissy. I'm the executive director of the Shaker Heights Youth Center. We're a prevention agency, myself, funded through the Adams Board. I first want to thank the Council and the citizens of Cogahoga County for their generous support in the past of prevention and addiction treatment and mental health treatment as well. I'm here today to address the cuts to the Adams Board. From my perspective, any cut to underfunded programs is problematic, but it's especially terrible now, given the epidemic with opiates. Opiates have become the leading cause of accidental death in Cogahoga County, I believe, in the state, and I've included something in on the testimony. Hopefully, you'll be able to read that at your leisure. But as a prevention specialist, I need to let you know that opiates is just part of the problem. Tobacco leads to four hundred thousand premature deaths a year nationwide. Alcohol kills just under a hundred thousand a year. The misuse of tobacco, alcohol, and other drugs not only impact the individuals who use it, but their families. Tobacco through secondhand smoke, and addiction impacts neglect and child abuse. Healthy parents raise healthy children. All the services in the world cannot substitute for a functional family, and that's why we need both enhanced prevention and treatment responses. The Shaker Heights Youth Center serves youth who are among the most vulnerable in our community. Our largest program serves students who are suspended and expelled from school. We provide both academic support and use the life skills curriculum in the afternoon. We also are working to develop youth-to-youth messages on smoking and alcohol and drug use. We seek to build assets in the lives of the youth, and we serve to work with and reduce their risk factors. We really have the goal of producing youth who are... We really have the goal of producing youth who are drug-free and productive citizens. A good start to youth is important, but it's a, the race for raising healthy children is a marathon and not a sprint, and investment in children needs to be long-term. Youth development begins at birth but must extend beyond high school graduation so that when these children have grown up and are raising families, they're raising their children in a healthy, supportive environment. I thank you very much for your time, and I think I'm it.
Thank you.
The final speaker is Nelson Ramirez.
Good morning, Chairman Greenspan and members of Council. My name is Nelson Ramirez. I'm the Executive Director of Hispanic Yumadap, located on West Twenty-Fifth Street. For the past twenty-six years, we have been providing both prevention and treatment services to a community that is most at need and suffering on the west side and also the greater community of Cleveland. We are based in our prevention program in the school systems. Throughout the year, we will touch the lives of over fifteen hundred students from elementary, middle school, and high school. Our residential treatment is a small residential treatment, but it is the only Hispanic culturally competent residential treatment air center in Cuyahoga County and one of the few in the state of Ohio. Just to give you an idea of this epidemic, this opiate epidemic, we also partner with the Cleveland Free Clinic with a needle exchange. There are three needle exchanges in this city. Our site, on a monthly basis, exchange over twenty-five to thirty thousand needles a month. Let me repeat, over twenty-five to thirty thousand needles a month. In February alone, it astounded me. We, we distributed at our site close to fifty-five thousand needles. Now why is this? It's because of our great transportation system that we have, highway system. We're located within a stone's throw away from seventy-one, ninety, and one-seventy-six. This is not a urban, inner-city problem, as you all know. That just gives you an idea of what we are facing. We need to continue these fundings so that we could educate our youth, our young adults, and now even the growing senior population who is becoming addictive. I plead to you and I come before you that you, that you reconsider this reduction in the Adams Board budget and that you continue to provide the necessary dollars so that we can continue serving this community. And most importantly, these dollars allow us to, to multiply with other organizations that we are able to bring in as partners. These are very important dollars for us, much-needed dollars for us in a time that is very desperate in this community. I thank you for your time and thank you again for this opportunity to present to you.
Very good. Thank you very much. Madam Clerk, was that the last speaker?
Yes, Mr. Chair.
Okay, we'll move on to the item referred to the committee. We'll go through the formal process. Will a clerk just read the title, please?
Resolution Number Two Thousand Fifteen Zero Two Zero Nine, A Resolution Adopting the Two Thousand Sixteen, Two Thousand Seventeen Biannual Operating Budget and Capital Improvements Program and Declaring the Necessity That This Resolution Become Immediately Effective.
Great, thank you very much. The first area to speak today is the Court of Appeals.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, Mr. Greenspan, Mr. Brady, Mr. President, Honorable Members of the Chair Council, Mr. Kraus, Mr. Prosecutor. Good morning again. I'm Frank Salabrese, Eighth District Court of Appeals Administrative Judge, and I'm here with my Court Administrator, Udo Volfrey. Our Eighth District Court of Appeals is the largest and busiest appellate court in our state of Ohio. We have twelve judges and fifty-two employees, all of whom are on the state of Ohio's budget, not on the Cuyahoga County's, which is a big savings of well over a million dollars for our county. The Court of Appeals jurisdiction is over all trial courts in our Cuyahoga County, and as a result, the county is responsible by statute for our operating expenses. In two thousand fourteen, ladies and gentlemen, there were well over fourteen hundred appeals filed, over one hundred original actions, and well over five thousand motions filed and ruled upon by our court and staff. The biggest change in our operation, or to our operation in the last year has been to the elect, to the introduction of electronic filing. While e-filing is a benefit to the public and to the legal community, any cost savings have gone to the clerk of court's office, not the Court of Appeals. In fact, we have had to spend considerable time, effort, and monies over the last year making software and operational changes which are ongoing as a result of our e-filing and working together. The budget which we agreed to with the Executive's Office and OBM represents a five, a five percent cut in two thousand sixteen and a five percent cut in two thousand seventeen. But we stand with all the courts in Cuyahoga County and are asking that the Council restore those cuts. Our Court of Appeals has always operated within its budget, ladies and gentlemen, and we are proud of that. The dollar amount we are talking about are very small. However, we don't have the ability to use vacancies or other personnel moves to make up a deficit. Those cuts would truly come from our very modest and operating budget, budget. On behalf of all my fellow judges on my court, our staff, we appreciate your time and continued support of our court, and we all look forward to continually working together to make our appellate court as efficient as we have shown to be in the past. Thank you again for your continued support and public service. Thank you.
Very good. Judge, if you'd stay up for any questions?
Oh, yes, I forgot.
Any questions of the committee? Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Next on the agenda is our County Prosecutor, Mr. Tim McGinn.
Good morning, Chairman Greenspan, President Brady, and all Council members. Thank you for hearing us today and thank you for the continuing generous and wonderful support you've given to the County Prosecutor's Office since I took this position, and we are especially grateful, thank you, for, for your support last year of approving funding for, for the additional investigators that were needed and the victim-witness advocate for the sexual assault task force that we've undertaken with great success, with your help. Our goals have not changed. My staff endeavors daily to make Cuyahoga County a thriving and safer place to live, work, and conduct business. We are now targeting the most serious and repeat offenders, restoring public confidence in and reforming the criminal justice system, making it more effective, efficient, and maintaining the integrity of the prosecutor's office, and these are our continuing priorities. The Cuyahoga County Prosecutor's Office is a county in a people's final line of defense against murders, rapists, robbers, gangs, drug dealers, child abusers, frauds, and others that threaten our lives, our homes, and our families. We, we have all read and know about the, the monsters in the community, that the mass murders of which we are prosecuting a number, serial rapists which we are prosecuting a great number at this point, and the other habitual criminals which are responsible for this portion of the crime in this county. When a state seeks to convict a criminal, the prosecutor carries the burden of proof for each and every element of the charged crime. I need and I have the best and most dedicated attorneys to do this important job in this county. Their willingness to work below their market value, far below their market value, is a testament to their, and to continue to do so, is a testament to their devotion to this county, to the people of this county, and, and the mission they're on. We feel we protect the county citizenry and bring the help to the victims of justice and by successes and efficiency, we save future victims from having to be victims of these same individuals. This rape task force program is a perfect example. We also safeguard our economy, the economy of our county, because no economic development plan is viable in an unsafe community. People are moving, we want them to stay, that's the first step, we want them to come back, and we want to be able to have jobs here, work here, and make this an attractive county. So we are a part of the county's rebound that you are orchestrating, and we want to remain so and continue to do so. We, like other agencies and department, departments in the county, have been approached with the county to find ways to reduce expenses and budget, and we have, and as an alternative, identified additional general fund revenues and opportunities to create cost savings. Besides presenting what is in essence has been, is, continues a flat budget and not exceeding our budget, we first have pledged a million dollars from the county's delinquent tax and assessment collection known as DTAC funds, which are controlled funds of limited purposes that we get, to offset general fund costs associated with the county property demolition program established by council in October fourteen. This is a commitment to spend this money that, that we receive in control in conjunction with your manager or whoever you and the executive designate to complement the initiatives currently underway by my office in a blight prevention initiative. As you may know, we have focused on limited areas and reading and studying lessons learned across the country that we believe the most effective way of this blight elimination and most, making areas economically viable as stabilizing property values is to concentrate the demolitions in areas and take down all the houses, every single house on the street. We want to go street by street, make it vacant, abandoned house free, area by area, abandoned free, and we've chosen three areas, two areas in large focus next, one next to the clinic, one next to Metro Hospital, and we've been adding some help to the Broadway Fleet Area Initiatives and, and success programs. The, we have, we could give a long speech on it, but we want to work with your director, whoever that may become, and, and continue this program and, and not just this year but in upcoming years. We, we need the help and we, we need your expertise. The, we are looking at, at blight, we are looking at crime in a different manner. You see a map above on the screen there, the, besides studying the reduction of crime in an area where the, and the value increase in the, in the area where homes are removed, we're looking as an example of the four hundred seventy-three square miles in Cuyahoga County, the, that, we realize this is a very safe county overall when you look at it. The majority of murders, this is just a focus on murders only, these dots of two thousand fifteen, and the year isn't over, and we're exceeding other years and we look like we're going to, if it continues, break a record that would go back seven or eight years, the, unfortunately. The, the majority of the murders take place in two percent of the geography of Cuyahoga County. That's very interesting. The two-thirds of the murders occur in less than four percent of it. We have three basic coins or, or triangles here where these murders are taking place. We are studying the crime because it's solvable if you study and look at it. We don't want to just continue to respond to bodies found. We want to, we can look at where crime is occurring, we can see the times of day it is occurring, we can see the individuals who are committing the crime. There's less than a thousand individuals who alternate between being victims and defendants in these murders. We want to look at it in a business-like approach, like a business would, a market, analyze it, study it, and conquer, and, and that's our plan over these upcoming years. We, this isn't going to be done overnight, and we're working closely with the, with, with a number of agencies, the eighty-five percent approximately of the murders are taking place in Cleveland. We're working closely with Cleveland and a number of agencies who are helping in this regard. We're focusing on gang violence, we're readjusting the traditional roles on, and of the prosecutor in that we're looking ahead and not just looking behind at crimes that have already occurred, and we're creating corroboration and, and entertaining plans. We may be on Plan A and we could be, end up on Plan D, but we're planning and we're working on it. The, we have identified other concrete improvements we can make to the prosecutor's office and the criminal justice system processes that will generate significant measurable savings and savings opportunities that will be reflected in, in the expenditures, the overall expenditures of your, general expenditures and the expenditures of other agencies. Approximately half of this county's discretionary spending, funding is spent on the criminal justice system, and we think we can spend it better and more efficiently and more effectively with your help. Specifically, we are set goals as examples that we will reduce the time and the prosecutor takes responsibility between the, the time that defendants are jailed by the cities and the police and the indictment process. We aim to reduce that by seven days, which there will be associated overall jail state costs in, in the supervision and, as a result. We believe we, we can make these savings and we, we have challenged the court, I, the court system, particularly the Court of Common Pleas, to join us. We have challenged them to reduce seven days, additional seven days between the time of indictment and time of disposition. The, the, I did that in another writing again yesterday to the court. We can do that, we will work them, with them together. We are willing to work faster, be more prepared, be prepared, be there, be ready for trial. We have increased the discovery monumentally. We have the best discovery in the country. There may be equals, but there's no one better in the discovery process. We can move our criminal justice system through faster. Eighty percent, four out of five of the felony indictments result in convictions on low-level cases, felony four or fives for misdemeanors. We want to focus our efforts and the court's efforts and the police efforts on the eight percent are committing the, the majority of the crime and the vast majority of the dangerous violent offenses. We also challenge the court to reduce the additional seven days, which can be accomplished basically by a phone call to the probation department and, and a readjustment of attitude on sentencing between the time a case disposes, which is almost ninety-eight percent of the cases, and the time the actual sentencing take place by seven days. Taking place on average of thirty days, a phone call to the probation department and a memo to the judges, let's speed it up, will reduce seven days. All of these twenty-one days will have a measurable cost by OBM that, that will be surprising. We've seen it before in other initiatives in the past with, with past county administrators when, we've taken these, these steps. The, but we, as the prosecutor's office, function in a large, in a larger part of this criminal justice system, and the, we want to work with others because the most desirable programmatic improvements and dramatic operational efficiencies require collective action of the courts, the public defender, the clerk, and, and the sheriff who, whose budget bears the enormous cost of extensive and unnecessary pre-trial delay. The, that, that we have focused, this is just focused on a series of gangs in the highest area of concentration of murders and shootings. If we had a sound finder, a shot finder, which many communities now have, which we would like to see have, we would find that the, the shots exceed, the shots fired in areas of Baghdad in, in this current environment, in this limited area of the fourth district, that we want to focus our efforts by this small group of people who are terrorizing the righteous and, and God-fearing people, the working people in that neighborhood and driving people out. We want to take that small number and put them, put them out and put them in the institution rather than, that's rather than, that's where I want to focus my efforts. And we want to continue working with these agencies, and the court has had some great developments in the diversions and pre-trials, we want to continue and expand those in the opportunity to get into them earlier and save the enormous cost that you're spending on this taxpayer's money on unnecessary incarceration. We have aimed to reduce our eight, what was the high of 18,000 indictments, down to under 10,000 this year, and we will see if we reach our goal, but we hope to, by December 31st. We're aiming for less indictments, less felony indictments, more diversions, more opportunities for rehabilitation by the rehabilitatable, and focusing on habitual violent offenders. I am pleased to report that since my last appearance and request for emergency funding for the sexual assault task force, we've made great strides, we believe we're leading the country, we have two close and probably equal partners in that success in other cities, Detroit and Memphis. We had a recent meeting with 20 some other cities who are duplicating our efforts, and we expect from the Justice Department's information, many more. We have not had to come to you for more emergency funding because we just received 1.937, almost $2 million, in funding, in a grant that we applied for and lobbied for through the Justice Department. And NIH has given us that, we're applying for more, and we're trying to alleviate the county's cost in this regard for that. We're good, we don't need to keep doing it. I won't go on about the successes. We've given you a copy of the results of this extracurricular task force that we created here, and we're indicted 1,000, our goal is to indict 1,000 individuals, we're over 40% towards that goal for these rapists. Over a third of them are serial rapists, and we have a 90% conviction rate. We are approximately 60% of the cases now we're pleading out. So it's been accepted in the community, and we're changing the culture of rape. We hope this culture of responsibility through the criminal justice system, through the police, through the prosecutors and other agencies involved travels and spreads to other agencies and in other types of crimes. It's been there for murder, there's been a high level accountability and responsibility for murder. We want to move it down a chain to other crimes beyond rape, and so we have a clear picture of performance and effectiveness. We're taking this approach all the way across. We thank you for your support. There's been so many hundreds of articles regarding this rape kit success, I don't think I need to go any further on that, but we'll be happy to answer questions. We have further embraced this crime strategies initiative, are encouraging the other agencies and police agencies to do so. We are, we think we will make a very significant impact on the gang violence. We have stats available regarding the gang violence arrests. You will see very soon additional, higher numbers added to that in the very near future. We are making an impact, we think we've stabilized the juvenile situation, and the juvenile detention center violence, working closely with the juvenile court, we think that is now under complete control, and is going to remain there with these new policies. We have, at the juvenile court intake and diversion, we've recognized errors that we were responsible for in policies that made a uneven distribution of prosecution, we have corrected that. That has been publicized, we are having far more diversion, the Cleveland residents are getting the same percentage of diversion and treatment that the suburban residents were, and that was our error and our correction with the help of the court. We are looking closely across the county for more corroboration. We've distributed our 2015 annual report to the public, which is like an SEC report to you, and I know you have it, and I thank you for all the support to help us improve the quality of justice in every position. We basically have a flat budget with these improvements, and we're happy to answer any question you have regarding any specifics.
Great, thank you. We do have a couple of members that have already requested questions, Ms. Simon and then Ms. Brown.
Thank you very much. Good morning, Mr. Prosecutor. I just want to know specifically how internally you're going to shorten the time for indictments, specifics, how that's going to start happening, and why hasn't it been happening before?
Well, we extended the time through, in 2005, we got the report from the Justice Management Institute, which told us that we should do more front loading, evaluate the cases as they come in, we were overcharging, and that they need attorneys faster, they need court appearance faster, they need evaluation by all the prosecutor and the police side particularly sooner. We have done that, and we created the early disposition court. The court, in essence, killed the early disposition court. It was highly successful, reduced jail time, and we have acknowledged now that they are not going to revive the early disposition court despite numerous recommendations from the experts. So we are going to advance the indictments, unfortunately. We are hoping the executive and his office have given us some leadership opportunity there, we're going to, we are hoping we back up, we want to eventually back up and create a time for an attorney to be on the case, to work with the prosecutor, point out errors of the police or the prosecutor in the initial charge, and create this time where they can work the case out or divert it or put it into drug treatment, alcohol, mental health treatment. But in reality, they're just sitting and rotting now because the court won't, has eliminated early disposition court. So we're going to accelerate the process, accelerate the crisis. When they finally get the attorney, we can go back and we can reevaluate.
So don't you need cooperation from the PD or public defenders and assigned counsel to get the lawyers on hand as part of this process?
We do. We haven't received it. We're looking for it.
You have not?
We have not. We are looking for it. We're begging for it.
So when can you realistically begin this seven-day reduction, if you don't have a commitment?
We're in the process now of it. We hope to extend it later, go back from it, give the attorney, if an attorney gets assigned early, we'll give them more time to work on the case, to reevaluate the case, to say, we don't want it, on a solid case, say, we don't want an indictment, we want to do information. Yes, he did steal the bike, is Law Director Trozzi's example in the paper yesterday was, he did steal the bike from the task garage. He is technically guilty of aggravated burglary, but we want to plead him to something else. He's 18, and we don't want to give him a felony one, we want to, or we want to put him in a diversion program where he goes back to school, finishes high school, addresses his drug alcohol issue, and at the end of the year, his case disappears, the bike has been returned to the neighbor.
Okay. So I know what the goal is, but I'm not sure how it can be accomplished without the other participants involved and committed to this reduction.
It can't.
So it can't happen.
It can't happen until that happens.
So I'm looking at the seven-day reduction proposal timeframe, and the answer we have is that it's going to start right away, but I don't think-
It's starting right now, it's starting.
You're starting it.
We face the reality that the court is, for its own reasons, killed the early disposition program.
I know. So the court has a challenge with budgets as well, they've been cut significantly, and this office hasn't, so I think there has to be a further discussion about the court separately from this, but I don't see this happening, this reduction, as it was told it would be, without commitment from everybody, I don't see this happening.
Well, I don't need anybody else to do that.
Okay, that was my question.
I can get it between the police and we, we're not leaving the case languish for an opportunity that won't take place. If there's not an attorney, I can't plead the case, I can't do anything with the case.
Okay.
So we're indicting, unfortunately. But I hope if they get on board, and I know the law director and the executive are pushing, that it be reconsidered, that this early evaluation, that the early appointment of counsel, we just read in the paper regarding it today, I believe, or last night, the law director and the executive want to follow these recommendations of the experts in the National Center for State Courts, and we want to follow them, and we're willing to follow them. And the savings will be enormous if we do, if we get these pleadings, if we rehabilitate the individuals, which are in the 90% rehabilitatable range, early, and I think we're going to get there, I think under the leadership of the county and the executive and the law director's proposal, we'll get there.
Okay. And just two more, thank you. How many more kits are waiting to be tested?
We're in an 85, 90% range already tested. We will, early 16, somewhere in the spring of 16, we're looking at all the tests, because we have to go across Ohio. We are behind our investigations from the tests we've received already, but we want to close all the tests because they identify the serial offenders, which we put the highest priority on. If we see someone who's done five, six, seven rapes, we immediately zoom to that individual, put him on top of our priority list to prosecute him immediately, and so that's been our program. The Attorney General, lucky for us, the BCI has paid for all of this, and they've been very committed. We have more testing done than any other state in the Union. We are number one because of the wine and BCI.
Okay. Yeah, that's great work, thanks. And lastly, after the memorandum with our county law department, assuming some more of responsibility for civil cases than the prosecutor previously had, how much time now do your civil attorneys at the prosecutor's office have, and is there a savings you've seen as a result of the transfer duties? How is that freed up?
Well, it has allowed more focus with each, between the law department and the county prosecutor's civil divisions into, in their areas of responsibility, we've had mutual cooperation in a number of cases. We have the same interest sometimes, the same outcome goal, and we work together well, and there's been absolutely no friction, dispute, territorial issues, and I think the county's a beneficiary of that cooperation.
Have you seen any savings of-
I haven't looked at it in a savings aspect, I haven't made a cost evaluation of it. Okay, maybe you can.
Hi, Jane Platt, Chief of Staff for Prosecutor McGinty. At the point that the memorandum of understanding was executed, and during that budget process, two positions, attorney positions from our civil department were eliminated from the budget. So that was the savings that happened actually upfront at the time of the budget cycle last time, so. And we are functioning at capacity with work, and a lot of it is actually in cooperation and conjunction with the law department.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Great. Mr. Schron and then Ms. Conwell.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yes, Prosecutor, your seven days is aspirational, or do you think it's realistic?
Realistic, I think the whole, I'm really shooting for 21 days. I mean, seven days-
I'm going to go to the other two, the other two sevens, but I'm taking your first seven, that you said you were going to have the most control.
We will achieve that, that's my control. I can control the police and my office, and that's what stands in between. So we are demanding the reports, we're putting them in, we're going to get it done.
Okay, and you said, you used a nice example when you said business-like, we're using some statistics and some numbers crunching because that's-
Sure.
We all do, we all use that. So with the seven days as the goal, and it's not an aspirational, it's a realistic one, what's your timeline? If we started zero of those days saved today, where are we going to, when will we hit the seven days?
Within months. By the end of the year, we should be more than halfway there, early in the year, we should be all the way there.
Okay, so by-
We're just changing the rules and putting it through.
Okay, so with that, we'll actually see, I assume your chief of staff will actually be keeping a calendar the same way we keep goals and sales and targets.
Exactly.
We're going to be able to actually walk those days and see them rolling down to one day, and then two days and three days.
We're measuring it directly, and we're also measuring days in the county jail, we're breaking up the county jail like you would in business, say, in operation. We're looking at the jail from how many people in its pre-tailed detention are here, and the vast majority should be high-level cases. It's not so, it's low-level cases. We're looking at bond, we're looking at everything, we're looking to get people, we're looking to reduce incarceration, and particularly mass incarceration. I looked at Branton, the old, the old end, the new chief again, in New York, I'm copying what he and Chicago and the LA chief are doing. These are not something we invented, we're reducing incarceration to make not just cost, but to make it more effective, so we do not have our time, detective, police, prosecutor, court time diluted by spending an overdue amount of time on low-level cases, which we can predict the outcome, we want to look at the outcome. They're going to be into rehabilitation programs or probation, offer it to them right now when they come into jail, not, why wait and keep them in jail three or six months? Put them in where they're criminalized in the college of crime. Why not put them right into the rehabilitation, get them right out, not have that expense and degeneration of their moral character while they're in jail? Get them out, and then we can, then we don't have 10 pre-trials, or, you know, or trials set over and over and over again on petty cases. We want to get to the heart of the case and the essential cases and move to low-level cases rapidly, fairly, and expeditiously.
Okay, so with that being a target, that being the goal, and that being the measurement, then you're going to hold people accountable within your department when or if they would not achieve that-
We will.
-by actual activities against that individual that fails to perform, I hope.
I will be responsible, I will be the person who fails to perform.
Yeah, in this conversation, you will be.
As far as counsel, we'll make sure-
But I assume you're going to have to, you can't do this by yourself, it's got to be, the operational people are going to get it.
They are more than willing to do it, and it's going to, the savings are going to carry on into the next stage. We are pressing the court to move their cases faster. I do not want, and a vast majority of courts or judges are hardworking, effective, efficient, dedicated, and I see them working until 6:00, 7:00 at night. But we want, we do not want cases set, reset, lasting a year. I do not want people sitting in jail a year. I was a judge for 19 years, I never had anybody in jail for a year, over six months even. We can move these cases faster. When we have dozens of people sitting there for over a year, or 75 people over a year, that's an enormous cost, it's enormous strain on the system, and I bring these detectives and witnesses in over and over again for trial and preparation, and it creates opportunity for intimidation. Besides expense, it makes it harder to prosecute, and you lose the deterrent value.
I was going to work down to the other, the next seven and the next seven, to see where we are, but I wanted to stay with your seven, your goals, your objectives, and then we're going to put it-
Yeah, I'm entirely responsible, I can't blame that on anyone but me.
Well, I'm not looking for blame, I'm looking for credit, I'm the other side.
If I don't achieve it.
I'm always a cheerleader and recognizing the achievement when it happens. So a year from now, when you stand before this, we'll be able to actually have that measurement, because I assume somebody's going to be held accountable just walking up to the microphone, too.
She can give you the exact numbers here.
Thank you again, Jane Platt, Chief of Staff for Prosecutor McGinty. Councilman Schron, we know, according to the Common Pleas Court statistics, that in 2014, it took 142 days on average to move a jailed defendant through the judicial system. It took the prosecutor's office, on average, from the time we received the case until the time of indictment, approximately 28 days. So we are already improving our internal processes, processes, and have lowered the number from 28 to approximately 22, 21, I believe it is right now. In the late summer, when we began the discussions with the executive's office, we began to look at our grand jury processes internally. We realized when you go from one day of first, I'm sorry, five days of first appearances that the court historically had done, to one day of first appearances for the city of Cleveland, and one day for municipal prisoners, defendants in jail, we lose time in order to process more folks in a week. So they were actually sitting, they're actually currently sitting in jail longer now, waiting for a first appearance, or waiting for an attorney to try and get into a diversion program. So instead of waiting that period of time, we're going to upfront start the indictment process, and the other process change that we have is not just taking inmates by the time by which they've come into our system- time by which they've come into our system, we're focusing on the jailed inmates upfront, which there was a tendency to do that in the past, but now that is, that's the rule. You get the jailed inmates indicted first.
Okay. So we've gone from 28 to 22, so our new target will be 14?
Yes, well.
Okay. So 14, when you come up next year, at this point, one year from now, we're going to, it'll be 14 from arrest to disposition, whether it's indictment or what the action is at that point in time. Is that?
That's correct. I do think, though, that we can get it down even lower, and I also think, you know, once we get a better sense of upfront cooperation, central booking, for example, for the city of Cleveland, and a central charging process with the city of Cleveland, if we were sitting next to the city prosecutor today to process their current caseload, I think that we would have a greater efficiency right off the bat. And we're actually working with them better today than we were a year ago. We're getting their cases more quickly, not all of them, but we're getting there.
What's the gold standard for best practice in the nation right now on that?
I can just say, we brought in the National Center for State Court experts, basically efficiency experts, like you would at a factory.
Sure.
How do we improve our assembly line, and how do we get it moving? They point to several cities, but my favorite is New York City, because I remember Bonfire of the Vanities, you know, that great book Tom Wolfe wrote in the 70s, early 80s, about the monumental inefficiency and bureaucracy in the Bronx, and in a comedy or mock that he wrote on the system. The five boroughs of New York now have their first court appearance, and have for about five years. The five boroughs for five years, within 24 hours, they have an attorney on the case, has met with the defendant, has received discovery, and has their first court appearance at 24 hours of their arrest. They sort the case right out, right off the bat. They look at, this is a low-level case, he stole the bike, but this is an 18-year-old kid with two petty thefts. We do not want to send him down, up the river, so to speak, up Hudson in New York. We want to get the kid back on the street, back in school, and they make a quick adjustment. They have an attorney. You can't do anything without an attorney, and you can't do anything without a prosecutor upfront and a police upfront willing to evaluate and realize what the case really is. It's not really a felony one, it's a juvenile-type event, and it's not a big deal.
Okay. So our target is somewhere in the three to five days, it sounds like.
Yes.
Okay. So does that translate to?
Two to four is what we're talking.
Yeah, okay, two to four.
Five to.
Stay with your numbers and.
And then I want to move it down.
Okay. And then that translates to dollars, ultimately, in a business sense.
The longer you're in jail, the more cost it costs you.
County dollars that we can use for other purposes.
Yes.
Yeah.
Like, we can trade off this jail, we can sell the jail space to the state, and have local incarceration for felony cases, because it's cheaper, and they have a lower recidivism rate if they're doing their time here. They already had a great program for some years here where the judge, when I was a judge, you could just send them, if you would be willing to send your guy, instead of downstate to only six months in prison, we could keep them in the county jail. And at the county jail, then, you could have work incentives. You could cut days off for work if they would work the kitchen or the laundry, that type of thing. They maintain their family locations. We could sell off a community-based correctional facility within the county jail. We could have work release. We've discussed other things, dreams of the sheriff, that Sheriff Pakeney and his predecessor Boba would have liked to have done, if we had the room. We've brought down the detention level, pre-trial detention level, which was choking the county jail, down to a more manageable, I want to get it under 50%, down in the 40% range. Then you can use the county jail for what it's intended to be, not just a pre-trial detention holding center where you're holding people for 20 trials of continuances in a year of delay, ongoing needless delay, successful delay, from a defense viewpoint, maybe, but unsuccessful from a prosecutor or the public's viewpoint.
But what that means to us, sitting up here, is that when we're starting to do planning for our next jail system, if you can hit those targets, that means the facility we have to plan for is a different-looking facility, the cost, the capitalization, all that.
You can make money in certain pods. You can sell it to the marshals, you can sell it to the state, and you can create your own community-based correctional facility within the jail besides the one you have now. You could have a female one and others.
Well, we can only do that if you achieve your success.
And well, that's just.
I'm looking forward to next year when you come and bring us up.
Well.
Let me invoke the three-question rule and come back here.
I'm still on my first question. I was telling the seven days, that's why I keep trying to bring the prosecutor back to his seven days. Well, I really believe that the example you set, by when you hit that by next year, the other two seven-day periods will actually come into play.
Thank you.
Because they will see your success, and they will feel a commitment to actually making that happen.
For the first time in my 42-plus years at criminal justice, we are setting goals. People don't like goals, because you either achieve them or you don't, because if I don't achieve them, you're going to remind me I didn't achieve them.
Darn straight.
And we're setting goals, and it's a challenge. We want the challenge, and we think they're reasonable, objective goals. Those who would defy all economic science, some bureaucrats don't think there's any savings by moving the system faster. That stands on the head of reason. It's ridiculous. We get justice faster. We get people back to the community faster. We get justice for the victim. We get, the vast majority of these people need some type of rehabilitation and deterrent. They don't need the imprisonment. But one of my greatest priorities is not to lose sight of a person like Anthony Sewell. He's a classic example that we can all remember with stacked women.
I was waiting, there's like in a presentation, you haven't mentioned that case. I was waiting for you to weave him into the discussion.
I live by that case, Councilman, Ms. President. The, you know, that's, I don't want to see that mistake made again, where we've got, we could have solved that case earlier in criminal justice, and we failed to do so. We had repeated opportunities, and it drives me crazy when I see chances, when we blow chances to bring somebody in, habitual violent murderers and rapists. I want to end that, and I want to take responsibility, and I want to have a culture of responsibility and accountability, and do the autopsies on these failures so we don't repeat them, instead of burying the mistake and ignoring it.
Okay.
From our second question.
Well.
It was just to.
So we may invoke a three-question or 15-minute rule.
Okay, all right. Well, sorry about that.
That's the Greenspan rule.
Yeah, we'll remember that. The success you indicated on your blighted property by only doing three sections, three targets, can you tell us whether that's been successful in your mind versus a broad rush?
It's early to tell the success, and I chose areas that we could measure easy and have, they have success partners in each of the three. Hospitals have great programs, have great desires to expand into the community, become part of the community, and they have a lot of money, and they also have police departments. So they have promised to expand their staffing homes, in other words, become the second mortgage and build in these areas once we've stabilized them, and to what extent they can, they will. And we've received very firm promises from both the CEOs of both organizations. The third organization is a combination of community groups in the fleet area, with Tony Bracatelli and the banks and others who are working. They're tearing houses down fast, cheap, very cheap. They show me how fast they can do it. They are showing our bureaucracy how quick and cheap you can tear down houses, replace them, and they're putting them up. They're putting them up. This is a lot of private money out there and energy. It's amazing, and we're just a small part of it. These are examples. I just, I could take the $2 million, spread it out all over the county and say, each suburb, each section of the county, you could tear down two houses, or I could focus them. And I'm trying to create some momentum, because if my street, if your street has all the signs that vacant free, and I live five blocks over, I'm going to look at my politician, councilperson, mayor, whoever, and say, what about me? Am I shoplifter? And then focus on the five houses that are on that street. Let's go to each individual house, which has been condemned for years, rotting away, and criminals using it. We've had murders, we have rapes, children dragged into these houses, causing fear. Nobody's buying on that street, you've got five vacant houses. Nobody's building on that street, period. Let's knock that, let's figure that street up, put that sign vacant free, and work our way right down the avenue to where we have a section. With the hospitals, we have the additional benefit of the police departments being able to come out and patrol that neighborhood. We've given them a legal opinion that they can go out and patrol that neighborhood if they own that property. So if they take, we give them the properties from the land bank. For a buck, the land bank will give them to them if they'll build on them, and they can take those properties, they can expand our patrols via secondary agency, police agency, the Cleveland Police. That will deter crime to criminals. National studies, it's been shown all over, the crime occurs in about 150% increase level around the areas of vacant homes, in vacant abandoned homes. If you eliminate that, you have a dramatic drop in crime. Now, that's made some people in city councilmen a little mad that I didn't choose their area, but this is a limited amount of money, and it's an experimental amount of money, and we're trying to use it for a successful experiment. It's still out, whether it'll work or not. I believe it's working, but slowly it will work.
I agree.
Okay. Very good. Ms. Conwell and Mr. German.
Thank you. The chair to the prosecutor, touching on a little bit of Schron's question. With the savings your office proposes, we'll save the county for this fast-track system. Could these savings assist with lowering future prosecutor budget needs?
They could. They could lower, if we reduce crime, it would eventually, consequentially, reduce prosecutor, police needs across the board. There's benefit everywhere.
And so you're willing to have some cuts if this produces some savings? I mean, on one end, it's looked as cuts, but it's really a savings.
My happy day would be if crime, violent crime was cut in half, if gangs were, the gang problem controlled completely or near completely, it's practical, and there should, then we'd have too many police, we'd have too many courts, too many prosecutors. That would be a happy day for all of us.
Reducing the incarceration with this fast-track system, how does this differ from the diversion programs that are out there?
They work in conjunction with one another. I mean, you need diversions, you need the mental health courts, you need the drug courts, alcohol court, the mental health is, you know, at least 10%. I don't know if Mr. Denny is still here, he'd probably say 20% of the cases have a mental health component, minimum 10%. The, you know, if we have a fellow, and we charge him with robbery because he goes into the store on Detroit Avenue, and he assaults the clerk because he won't pay for his eight cans of kidney beans, and he goes outside and he immediately starts opening these cans of kidney beans, and the police come, and he thinks the kidney beans are going to save him from the nuclear radiation leak from the Perry plant, and the wind is from the west, and he needed those kidney beans today. Well, we can charge him with aggravated robbery, and it takes a lot of time, and we get a felony one attorney on there, it takes, it goes into slow-mo, but he's got very serious mental health problems, we find out, you know, which you would think may have been obvious, and it probably is obvious to police, they don't know what else to do with the guy. So they put him in, and we spent a lot of money, and in six months from now, we realize he needs some mental health treatment. We've wasted a lot of time, a lot of money. He's been abused, and all kinds of things happen in the jail that aren't good. We could take him right out of the system and not charge him at all. Charging him isn't going to add, it adds a little leverage. If leverage is needed, fine, but we don't need to put him in county jail for six months at the cost of $10,000. It doesn't make sense. And another $10,000 in attorney fees and other costs. We can do that on day one. We can figure that out within 24 hours if we upfront evaluate the case that we're wasting, we're about to embark on a great waste of time.
All right.
He needs his medications. He needs to get back in the treatment program.
So with the fast-track system, that attorney, or in that first 24 hours, you will be able to identify that for every.
Realistically, 48 hours, we're not going to equal New York, their efficiency, but the, within 48, and if a weekend, four days, we should get this guy identified and get it on a reasonable course, and lower expectations, and deal with reality on a guy like that.
And my last question.
He's still a problem if he's, you know, hitting the clerk to get his kidney beans out. We have to deal with him.
My last question probably is similar to Schron's. Your plan to pick demolished homes, are homes that you identify needs to be demolished due to some crime issue, will this be a coordinated measure with each municipality? And primarily, I think you're talking about city of Cleveland right now.
Right now, it's all Cleveland. We could easily spend it in, all of it in East Cleveland, on just a few blocks, which we consider, you know, the, we could, but I thought that this might be an example that we work through with the, and learn the lessons from locally. Our machinery, our bureaucracy of condemnation and tear down, it needs work, it needs to grow, to handle this. At the rate we're tearing the houses down, that would take 100 years to spend $50 million. We need to improve our process and to learn how to get these condemnations and abandons down and improve the speed of it, and we are learning lessons from this.
I think.
Is that going nearly as fast as I like it to, or as well as I like it to? But we're working and with it. We've got 160-some, and we're going to tear down over 200 in these two regions. We're learning lessons from the third, Tony Bracatelli's group is not going to down so fast, we're looking, how is he doing it? So we're going over, and they've got drivers that we're trying to learn from.
And I think I meant by coordination of system, if you've identified the houses you want to demolish.
We have, we have maps.
Letting the city of Cleveland know, so their funding that they went, one or whatever, was awarded from the phase one, they could concentrate on other areas, that's what I meant by a coordinated system, so.
Well, they are really doing the bulk of the work, Cleveland, as far as, because they've got a process to condemnations, and there's so many permits and orders, and it's an understaffed industry of ma and pa's, tear-down companies right now. I'd like to see the big boys come in with big money, capable of a lot of tear-down at once, if the $50 million's ever a reality.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. German.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Prosecutor, you're indicating speeding up this system, and you said that you couldn't do it by yourself, and it seems that most of the savings has come from the jail time that you're going to be able to cut. I'm just wondering if we have enough people in a public defender's office and assigned counsel to be able to respond to this. Isn't there an increase in a budget that we may experience? Because you're ready, you know, to work, but if they don't have the attorney.
We have the same number of cases, in fact, we have less cases. So instead of having them all at the end of the assembly line, waiting for months to get to them, I want to put the attorneys upfront, the same number of attorneys, same expenses, which is costing tens of millions of dollars between, you look at the assigned council budget, which you get some reimbursement from the state, and the public defender budget, you're spending tens of millions of dollars annually on assigned council, which is just, you have to do it. But move them upfront, rather than go through this indictment and giving this guy the felony one on the kidney beans or the stolen bike, and Mr. Trazzi's example, out of the garage, work it out now, work it upfront, get the good attorney right upfront. If my kid or your kid, we're going to get, if he gets in the jackpot, I'm getting a good attorney right away, and I'm going to try to get this worked out upfront to the level it belongs. If he or she did something, okay, but if it's an exaggeration of the event, I want to get to the end result now, rather than wait six or nine months, particularly if my kid would be sitting in the jail. I'd want to get to it. The law director used his own kid, his own child analogy, what would you do if it was your child when he made this proposition, and I like it.
Okay. So I understand that. I just didn't know if, with the system, if we were going to need more assigned counsel, more.
We just have to change, changing our culture is very, very difficult in the criminal justice.
My second question is, actually, a problem I see, and I was reading the story about witness intimidation, where witnesses become as much the victim as the people that they're witnesses for, and especially in the violent areas where there's youth gangs out there.
Very true.
Do you wish to comment about that? Are you going to be working on toughening up charges against intimidation so that people can feel that they can be witness?
We are witnessing one of the most amazing cases right now I've ever seen in my life, going out to county jail. We have a criminal intimidating people from the county jail, defying the court orders, defying our restrictions of him, still getting out and intimidating witnesses, and we believe killing witnesses from the county jail as we sit here now. It is an enormous problem, and we've spent a lot of money hiding witnesses and keeping them apart so they stay alive for the trial. In one case, we have taken a highly unusual step of asking the court, and she granted In one case, we have taken a highly unusual step of asking the court and she granted the motion that we have taken depositions of the witnesses who have witnessed a murder so that even if they are killed, we have the deposition on tape in a criminal deposition, rarely used, so they can testify by tape even if they're dead to lessen the need to kill them. Although these type of people, these gangs will kill them anyhow, they can find them. So I have to hide them and some we've taken out of state, out of town to keep them alive so they can testify at the trial. Some people were sitting at a mass murder as close as you and I and say they didn't see a thing. And because they're intimidated, they're afraid. And we've had witnesses killed in the barbershop case. We've had witnesses killed already. An eyewitness who was right in front, a star witness of the whole thing, he has been killed. And orchestrating, we have evidence who orchestrated it. It is a, it is a tremendous problem. And that's why we need, we need to move cases quickly and efficiently and effectively. I can't leave people sit waiting a year or two for trial.
If we, if I, if we can, if I can just ask the counsel and the presenter to confine the comments and the responses to the budget itself, we can have a longer discussion in council and the chairman Gallagher's committee.
My third question, real quick. You're satisfied with the budget that's been presented?
We are. We will, we will live with it. I would like to beg like other people have and, because I have great employees and great lawyers and I'm losing great lawyers to being robbed and poached by other agencies of these great trained lawyers. But we understand the urgencies you have and we're going to live with it. We've tightened the belt and we will keep it tight.
Great. Thank you. Ms. Simon.
Just to end, well, I just, well, I see the value of these reforms and best practices, no doubt. I just want to caution against equating our criminal justice system with an assembly line, a manufacturing line. People aren't widgets. Individual cases are, everyone is unique and we can't just place on top of this a manufacturing business model and a factory farm of putting people through. And sometimes putting lawyers right up front at the gate will shortchange ability to assess the case and also opportunities to shortchange justice. So the balance is really, it's not all about the money. We appreciate the savings and understand the need, but from this council standpoint, at no time would I ever equate our justice system with, with an assembly line and widgets because this is about justice and every, every single defendant deserves the time a case needs to be properly assessed. And just like our health and human service, it's the same thing. It's not a business model. It's not about, you know, money. It's about, we need to assess each case, each individual, and whether that's in criminal justice or health and human service, I'm going to keep my eye on that ball. But I appreciate what you're doing to present us with new ways to look at things.
Well, thank you and we appreciate and fully agree that, and if they don't have an attorney, they can't get up. Nothing can happen until they have an attorney. And if they're waiting 30 days for their own good for an attorney, then they're suffering 30 days if they were that mentally ill person who thinks the kidney beans will save him or the kid who stole the bike who is now criminalized. We want to get them out of there fast.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? Great hearing, none. Thank you. If you could please submit your opening remarks to the clerk for the record.
We will. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. President.
Next on the agenda is the Adams Board. I want to, this is going to be a little, a unique presentation in the sense that Mr. Dennehan will present on behalf of the Adams Board, but the administration is, has asked for an unusual request to provide response to support their reductions. So after Mr. Dennehan, it's an opportunity to make his presentation. Well, the administration will then provide commentary supporting their reductions in conversation with the council president. We will then allow Mr. Dennehan to respond to the, to the administration's position. It's not intended to be a debate. This is merely intended to provide information for council to make the best and most informed decision. With that said, Mr. Dennehan.
Thank you, Chairman Greenspan, President Brady. I think I, I'll stand if that's okay.
Okay. If you'd like a chair at any point, just let us know.
Well, I'm going to be assisted by my staff in the presentation, so I will, I'll be sitting down in between, in the testimony. First of all, thank you for extending the extension from the 22nd of October to today. I sincerely appreciate that while we deliberated over the executive's proposal. So to you and to council president and all the honorable council persons here, on behalf of our board chair, Eugene Akash, who is with us today, our many providers, 65 providers, many of who are here today, and the more than 20,000 individuals whose lives are impacted by mental illness and addiction services, I urge you to maintain the $39.3 million budget that we have in front of you for a number of reasons. And Mr. Chairman, I'm going to go through the process as, as requested by this process. I will talk about the performance measures from 14 and 15 and the accomplishments. Goals and objectives will be dealt with by Valeria Harper, our chief of staff. John Garrity, our director of performance evaluation, will do key performance measures, key challenges. Scott Osicki will, director of external affairs, will do possible expansions, personnel, Medicaid expansion. And I will end up with the proposed administrative cuts and, and speak on the proposal as requested. Requesting continuation of this budget is critical for a whole number of reasons. First off, we already have our budget cut by 3 million. That's at the loss of Medicaid expansion. There is a rumor going around in this state that Medicaid expansion has been a goldmine for boards. That is not true. And not true in Cuyahoga County. It has not worked out that way. We love Medicaid expansion. It's a good thing. And to assume that Medicaid expansion has given us extra money, it has not. During the process, waiting for Medicaid expansion, we've got $7.5 million. We have zero now of the, zero. That's correct. Zero. That $7.5 million is gone. We, we expected to get over $6 million. We're about 4, 4.1 million. Additionally, the state of Ohio for mental health services of $51 million awards this county a total of $405,000. Now, you figure out the math, 11%. It's a lot more than $405,000. So we have taken a hit from the state of Ohio and our budget that was proposed to our county, our, excuse me, our 18-member board was $3 million short last night. We had $46 million of services last year. This year, we'll have $43 million of services. So that's critical. And to reduce it or consider reducing it by 17% would be devastating. Ours is the business of saving lives. That's our business, mental illness and addiction. And in terms of addiction, we are still in a great danger, not only with heroin but fentanyl. And it's, and it's not getting better, it's getting worse. So we haven't hit that level where the, all the efforts we've done have measured up to say, well, we're on the down here. We are not. And we continue to deal with a lack of capacity in mental illness and addiction and waiting periods for services. To tell a person that goes to a hospital and wants detox and says, and is told, you have to wait, it's a death sentence, period. You go there for a broken arm, they treat you. For detox, we've had, we started waiting periods of two to three weeks until we got the money that you gave us that we put into to reduce that waiting down to less than two days. So that's significant. And the advent of our sober beds, you're going to find out, that is significant. When we do 30-day treatment and send somebody home, after 30 days, what do you think happens? They recite it, they go back out. They need longer-term care. And we instituted with this money sober beds, 30, 60, 90 days. That has had an impact and will continue to have an impact with a reduction like this. That will be addressed. So in, maintain the process that you give me. We have the mission in front of you. Our mission is to receive money, advocate, administer the money and advocate that the dollars are spent according to our bylaws. The performance measures in 14 and 15, we reduced as we said we would, the civil beds. We would like to reduce the forensic beds, but we don't have control over it. We have reduced the civil beds. We had as a performance measure, our scale, our scale program, which was centralized assessment, we stopped doing it because the number of Medicaid consumers reduced the compliance. In terms of employment, we've increased the employment to near 500 and hopefully this year, we will hit 500. And in terms of employment, when a mentally ill person or an addicted person has a job, a number of things happen, and I know you know this, Mr. Shawn, you can see in their eyes, that's recovery. And it impacts treatment and hospitalization. In some cases, as much as 90%. So we consider that a high priority. Our accomplishments over the last, from 14 and 15, the advent of the sober beds, that is significant. We now have the ability to purchase sober beds, not for $100 a day, for $350 a month, in which we can have people in those sober beds for three, six, nine months. We've never had that before. Reduced the waiting time, as I said, for detoxification and dedicated our child crisis stabilization beds from three to five because of the need. Added weekend access for residential treatment, increased the number of clients obtaining employment and set up a temporary help placement program that nobody else in the state has for those providers, those employers who say, because of a drug test and failed drug test and everything I've done, I can't hire this person. Well, we have an answer for you. You can hire them through an agency, have them take all the insurance and responsibility, just like a temporary help firm. They could do random drug tests and they could work for that agency and over a period of time, while they're clean, that employer can hire that person. Nobody else is doing it and we have set that up to do. Reduced civil administrations to our North Coast Hospital and, and that, I flew by the accomplishments, Mr. Chairman, and I want to take this time to introduce Valeria Harper, our chief operating officer, who will talk about our objectives and our goals. And then I'm going to want John Garrity to come up and talk about key performance measures and Scott Osicki to talk about the other parts. And I'll end with the proposed administrative cuts and then talk about the proposal. Thank you for your attention, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
Good morning. Chairman Greenspan and Council President Brady, thank you and I'll be brief. You have in front of you our PowerPoint presentation of the goals and objectives. And my brief talk this morning will merely talk about some of the highlights under each of the seven goals. Our first goal is to, of course, maintain the number of beds for mental health and residential treatment. Residential treatment is the most intensive community-based environment for both persons living life with mental illness and/or addiction. What the Adams Board, through sustained funding, what we'd like to do is to continue on the path of growing our residential treatment environments. Mental health residential treatment is very different from residential treatment for persons suffering from addiction. The average length of stay for our individuals residing in residential treatment is a 30-day intensive program model. However, for mental health, that residential treatment environment can extend the length of stay to up to 18 months, given the severity of the illness for the person residing in the treatment site. Life-saving detox as our second goal is, as many of the testimonies this morning that you've already heard, is critical as it is the front door to the path to recovery. What we have done over the years, as Chief Dennehan has stated, is to work very closely with our provider agencies through funding from the Health and Human Service Levy to shorten the wait list. When a person who's struggling with addiction is presented, knocking on the door for help, the last thing that we want to do is to turn that person away. So board staff monitors very closely the wait lists as well as the availability of beds in our detoxification program. And we maintain a report as to how we're faring. We're not there yet by eliminating totally a wait list, but we certainly have reduced the amount of time that a person has to wait to access detox beds. Our third goal, as we talk about improving, maintaining our sober bed recovery environment, many talked about the pilot that Health and Human Service Levy dollars have helped us to develop for sober beds and recovery housing. The difference between a sober bed is that they have longstanding history and great results in our community that are not subject to any type of regulatory standards. The recovery housing beds, however, are in compliance with what's called National Association of Recovery Residents, which are national standards. So we're, we're providing funding and support for both of these environments. We need to maintain our current level of funding in order to respond to the opioid and heroin epidemic, not just that, but in addition to the longstanding drugs of choice that persons in recovery continue to struggle with today. As we focus on our fourth goal, which is employment, the provision of vocational and pre-employment services. As the chief talked about, the, what working does for a person's quality of life is very, very critical. We have pre-vocational, educational and, and pre-employment programs throughout our system that have requested additional fundings as we looked at their proposals for calendar year 2016. These critical and vital services have resulted in many individuals being employed in the work world. And we're not talking about what was a stereotype in the days of old when I started years ago, but we're talking now about those types of jobs that yield competitive employment at a living wage, which exceeds over $18 per hour. And we're very proud of our partners in our provider environment that has worked very hard with individuals that, medical models said, with a thought disorder or severe and persistent mental illness could never work, are working now and paying taxes. As our fourth goal, fifth goal, in front of you, we've talked a lot about the need for crisis services. As Ms. Neff with Frontline Services indicated, our mobile crisis team has continued to partner with our hospital systems, for example, as we are, work very closely with our very rich hospital system in Cuyahoga County. And we know that inevitably in our discussions in every meeting, the issue is raised with regards to the overcrowdedness in the emergency room, not just with adults, but with adolescents. So our mobile crisis team and funding from the Health and Human Service Levy has allowed us to, what I would say, resurrect a dedicated child crisis team to respond to not just the emergency rooms, but some of the crises that occur unfortunately in our school systems throughout the county, as well as working very closely with our law enforcement to help respond and offer treatment services as a result of witnessing at times very violent acts in our community. As we move towards a brief illustration of, of our sixth goal, which is our youngest citizens. When you talk about early childhood mental health, we're talking about the babies, those from birth to age six years old. In Cuyahoga County, many of our early childhood provider agencies have been identified as the lead in terms of innovative services provided to children and their families in this age, at this age. So it's critical. As we talked about, it was a pretty tough sell to talk about infant massage, but now it's an evidence-based practice approach as to the bonding, the critical bonding relationship that's essential to give the child or the toddler the confidence that I'm in a safe environment, I'm in a learning environment. learning environment, and to keep them on track for their natural development and growth. We're not diagnosing babies. We're teaching parents how to be good parents, to look for signs and symptoms that may need a different approach for parenting, but we certainly are very proud of our early childhood mental health system that requires a specialization and the therapist that works with these families. I could talk all day to school based, but the chief told me not to. We need to continue to support prevention, consultation, and early awareness of possible treatment needs in all of our 33-plus school systems in Cuyahoga County. We provide support to not only the students, but the teachers, school personnel, and most importantly, the parents. So we have a cadre of prevention providers, as well as treatment providers, strategically placed in support of providing services, information and referrals, talks to the students with regards to gangs. We have developed specific curriculums to address our LGBT population within our school system, and I can go on and on. But in closing, I wanted to bring your attention to our seventh goal, which is, again, the crisis intervention team, which are CIT training. We're so proud and celebrate this year, 10 years of providing crisis intervention training to our law enforcement throughout the county. Through a consent decree, we certainly are concentrating on the Cleveland Division of Police. And we know that our chief is the leader in that initiative as we talk about mental health and addiction and partnering with the law enforcement department. In this training, we're specializing on focusing on dispatchers as the person to receive the first call typically from the community. Dispatcher's training is far more unique than the standard curriculum in CIT. It's fewer hours, but it's highly concentrated, to gain some skills, to identify either by the nature of the call or even read in between the tones of the voices from the caller, that perhaps I should contact crisis, mobile crisis team, to partner with the police as we dispatch them to that home. So in closing, I want to thank you for your attention. I hope that I've provided additional information to the PowerPoint in front of you, and have a good day.
Thank you.
Good morning, Mr. Chair, Mr. President, Council members. I'm John Garrity. I'm the Director of QI, Quality Improvement Evaluation and Research at the Adams Board. And as Mr. Dennehan indicated, I'd like to just briefly highlight some of the key performance measures we'll be tracking during calendar year 2016, as a follow-up to his remarks and Ms. Harper. First off, elimination of the waitlist for detox. As, when we started tracking this in 2013, we had a five-week wait for detoxification services. We were able to get it down to two to three weeks, and as Mr. Dennehan mentioned, now we're averaging about five days. And that's still too long. There's a critical window of opportunity when someone in addiction has a threshold of life events or crises, or that moment of clarity where they seek help. And if they have to wait, oftentimes, they're unable to wait, and they often go back out and spiral down further in their addiction. Our residential treatment services, we had, three years ago, we had 108 beds. We increased funding. Through the increased funding, I should say, of the council, we were able to bring that up to 135 and now 172 residential beds. After detox and the continuum of care, 30- to 90-day stay in residential service is critical to get people firmly established on a path so they don't relapse in their addiction. Number of employed clients, we serve approximately 2,000 people, receive our vocational services. We have almost 500 employed, and we have another 20 percent that we consider workforce-ready. And we would like to sustain at that same level. A new performance measure, or series of performance measures we'll be following, is the results of the Mental Health Response Advisory Committee in conjunction with the city and the Attorney General's Office. Whatever recommendations and initiatives come out of that, we will have measures for that as well, especially centering around crisis intervention team. We would like to increase the number of crisis intervention team trainings and officers trained. We have trained almost 500 officers on the Cleveland Police Department in the past 10 years. We would like to offer specialized training for dispatchers. There's a discussion to offer a 101 mental health basic training for all officers on the force. And we would also like to expand in the suburban departments as well across the county. We will be tracking the number of diversions. We anticipate a significant increase of diversions from the criminal justice system to treatment at both the county and the state level. Another new measure will be working in our recovery-oriented system of care. This is a statewide initiative with the OACBA, the Ohio Association of County Behavioral Health Authorities. So all the Adams Boards across the state are working in conjunction to identify what's the best way to prioritize our funding, given the expansion of Medicaid. We want to place our dollars for recovery-oriented services such as employment, housing, things like that as much as possible. We're in the first phase of that. We conducted a broad needs assessment that involved surveys and focus groups to get feedback from our community stakeholders. And we're going to be implementing that first phase during CY 16. Another area is increasing the age of appropriate, excuse me, increasing age-appropriate peer support services. There's been substantial research that peer support is a very important component in treatment services for both mental health and addiction services, and really helps people new to their illness or new to services progress in their recovery. And so we want to expand that as well. And then increasing the number of early childhood mental health therapists. There's a shortage of those therapists that specialize in the very younger ages of children, up to six. We estimate there may only be 50 available right now in the county, and we want to increase that as well. Next, key challenges for calendar year 16. As you all know, our main concern is to be able to maintain our current county funding level. We need to address the lack of residential capacity to meet the addiction epidemic, especially for heroin and fentanyl. The heroin epidemic knows, shows no signs of letting up. I believe there were 199 deaths last year. I believe there were 59 deaths, the latest report we have from the medical examiner, with fentanyl, the new challenge in terms of opiate addiction. We want to keep our system ready for, to deal with more campaigns for marijuana legalization, even though it was soundly defeated. We've, you know, we've received word, or there's discussion in the press already, that the pro-forces are remobilizing and that we think it'll come back. The Adams Board feels it's very dangerous to have widespread legalization of marijuana, so we want to be ready to educate the public around those issues. Elimination of stigma against mental health, mental illness and addictions is always part of our goals, and especially battling that stigma in order to build financial support. We have a shortage of child psychiatrists. This is a statewide, probably a national problem, but especially acute in Cuyahoga County, given the need. Continued efforts to develop culturally competent services is another one of our key challenges. Addressing the state of Ohio's disparity in mental health funding. As Mr. Dennehan referenced, Cuyahoga County gets an extremely low per capita funding from the state. There are many rural counties with a tenth of our population that receive much, much more funding. Another key challenge is accepting the low-level offenders from the state and federal prisons with behavioral health issues. That state legislation, legislation will be going into effect, and in fact, also anyone who's incarcerated, when they're released, they become residents for the first 90 days of their county that they were released from. So Cuyahoga County has a lot of facilities, and we anticipate we'll be receiving a lot more people that will be responsible for from across the state until they become Medicaid eligible within 90 days. Again, the development of a recovery-oriented system of care, peer support for our children and adolescents. And then another key challenge, which will be discussed further by Mr. Dennehan, will be the DCFS Dependent Children and Diversion Programs. Now, I believe Scott Osicki, our Director of External Affairs, will talk about possible expansion in CY 16. Thank you.
Good morning, Council members. My name is Scott Osicki, Director of External Affairs at the Adams Board. So when we were putting the budget together, we were also asked to consider some possible expansions for 16. And while we are requesting to maintain the same level of county funding as calendar year 15, there are potential areas that we might need additional funding. So one of them is the expansion of the CIT training program, like Ms. Harper mentioned before, that it helps police officers react appropriately to situations involving mental illness and addictions. Increased capacity of residential treatment, sober bed and housing, and that would be to address our heroin epidemic. Increased peer support. Once again, that's an important component of helping people with mental illness and AOD recover, and that's also a major portion of our recovery-oriented system of care. Increased client employment. Once again, that's our goal, and as Mr. Dennehan spoke, people with employment, that's a major part of recovery. Increased early childhood mental health services, as Ms. Harper mentioned before, she could go on about that. So she definitely wants to have, we might need additional funding for that. And then, once again, the DCFS Dependent Children and Diversion Pilot Programs that Mr. Dennehan's going to talk about later. Another thing we wanted to talk about with you is the addition of some personnel that Mr. Dennehan is considering at the board. The first one would be a crisis intervention team training officer, and this person would be responsible for all the planning and making sure that the program is running smoothly, and for to increasing the number of CIT classes to be able to train more officers. Part of the responsibility, this is part of our responsibility of the consent decree with the city and the Department of Justice. The next would be a part-time client rights officer. And this person, we actually need another person because to meet the increasing demand to complaints and investigations and concerns brought forth by clients living with mental illness and addictions. Now, they're increased because we investigate all complaints, regardless of the payer source. So whether they're Medicaid, they're private insurance, if they have no insurance or not, we investigate those complaints. Another reason for an increase is because during the consolidation of the Mental Health and Alcohol and Drug Board, that created a mechanism for people with addictions to actually file complaints that wasn't in existence before. And then with Medicaid expansion, more people are becoming eligible for services, and then they found out about the process that they have a, they have a process to file complaints. The last one would be a business systems analyst, and that would be to oversee our shares program. And our shares program is a shared health and recovery enterprise system. And basically, what that is, is a program that we've been working on with Franklin and Hamilton Counties, and it serves as a data management system for not only processing payments, but it's also to provide detailed data on who we're serving, waiting list, types of services that we're providing, et cetera. And this is ready to go live in just a little bit. And then we're going to share a third of this cost for this position with the Adams Boards of Franklin and Hamilton County. So just wanted to touch base on Medicaid expansion, some realities of that. Medicaid expansion has, you know, as Mr. Dennehan said earlier, provided primary and behavioral health care for individuals that have had no insurance in the past. And there's been an increase in people receiving or requiring services for mental health issues, but it's been more significant growth with those people with alcohol and drug addiction, addiction issues. And we are very supportive of Medicaid expansion. However, there is a perception that Adams Boards have received an influx of cash because of Medicaid expansion, and this is just not the case. It is true that board funding from other resources, such as our local levy, has been reallocated from paying for mental health treatment services for people who were not previously covered by Medicaid, to recovery support services, such as the Housing Peer Support, Employment Prevention, Sober Beds, that are services that are not covered by Medicaid. So this is not new money coming to our system at all, but rather reallocation of funding that we were already spending. And the state estimated that Cuyahoga County would realize a cost savings of about $6 million a year. The cost savings in 2014 was $4 million, and our projected cost savings for this year is 5.5. Now, the cost savings from Medicaid expansion is less than the reductions in state funding that the board has received. In state fiscal year 16, we received an $8.5 million cut, less than we received for state funding in 14. And part of this is due to the misperception of the Medicaid expansion. It's important to also know that there are still individuals who do not qualify for Medicaid, and some individuals don't meet the redetermination requirements either. And this is where the board still comes in with our non-Medicaid funding to pay for those necessary treatment services for folks. And then, once again, that sustaining the Health and Human Service Levy in 16 is really critical, not to have the interruption of treatment and support services. Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm back. So we were asked to also itemize the impact of a loss of $6,718,182 from our $39.3 million budget, which is about a 17 percent reduction. So we, I've itemized them on the, on the pages that you could see from the, from the screen, and I'm not going to go over them individually, just pick out the individual ones. Our youth crisis stabilization, we had to dedicate two more beds for youth crisis. That was a must. And we've mentioned several times about, about detoxification and have it when people are ready, for example, weekends. This is not just a nine-to-five operation. We had to make sure that available for weekends. Residential treatment and integrated physical health care. The prosecutor spoke a little bit to that relative to jail, that it's not only physical health, but it's also behavioral health. And bringing those two together is extremely important. So we talked about the recovery beds in the sober living program, which has been a, an extraordinary successful program. For the first time ever, we have a program that evaluates all of our programs and brings those evaluations to the board to determine whether they're meeting the goals and promises upon, as it relates to our contracts. So for the first time ever, that we're doing that as a separate item. Residential treatment and housing is critical. We, in this business, for some reason, a medical-assisted treatment residency can only have 16 beds. It's a longtime rule that was established in 1963 as a result of the removal of individuals from mental institutions. And they did not want to have an increase in beds so that they build up institutions again. Well, with the advent of recovery and those in alcohol and drug addiction, it is the same rule. And we find that that is prohibitive to us to provide alcohol, drug, medical treatment because of that restriction. And our providers have pointed out to us that they could expand five, 10, 15 beds, but they can't because of the federal rule. So we have to seek other avenues to address this, and this is one of those avenues. Our prevention program, we've got to maintain prevention. Now, draw 36 rule here. People on this end are very, are very healthy, like everybody in this room today. And in the middle, they're mild or moderately ill. At this end is the deep end, serious, where it's cost. The more money that's put at this end and not in the middle, the more that goes like this, and the more increase the cost. So we have to keep a balance on prevention. So prevention is critical in things that we do. Early childhood mental health, Valeria spoke to, is essential. And we talked about employment, and she talked about peer support, again, detoxification for specific individuals. And our psychiatric services continue to need treatment. So that equals $6,718,182. And the, my staff has, I think, gone over, I think, very adequately, and explaining the details, and we're glad to answer any questions. But I think at this point in time, if the chair allows, I could respond to the proposal aspect of things.
Well, let me ask, let me ask if there are any questions of the presentation thus far. Any questions? Ms. Conwell?
Ms. Conwell.
To the chair, to Mr. Dennehan, and I don't know if Scott would answer this to you. It was regarding to the CIT training that is provided. Just wondering, is it possible to include some training to police to properly deal with the hearing impaired? I don't know if that's a hearing impaired individuals, and especially how to identify someone that is hearing impaired. I've received a few phone calls regarding individuals that may have had issues with law enforcement because of their inability to hear.
Well, that's a good thing about these meetings. You learn, you learn something new that comes out, and I don't know if that's in the curriculum, but, and I don't think it is, we'll certainly include it. That curriculum is extremely important. And right now, we're, I think we started yesterday to train dispatchers. And the importance of it is to de-escalate the seat. When an officer comes on the seat, they have the uniform, they have the gun, they have the badge, and, and so there is an embedded intention. So when an officer comes on and says, oh, in a light tone voice, "So what's the problem?" Somebody tell them some problem. "Okay, yeah, let's work it out." "Yeah, okay, maybe you have a problem." A lot different than we've seen at times. We are teaching them how to use their voice and deflect things and bring it down. That's one part of it. The other part is, is that we are looking at other programs of diversion where the officer would have opportunities, instead of taking them to jail, take them to St. Vincent's Hospital for medical care and also for behavioral health treatment. The would-be, what-if thing is, what if we had a drop-off place that was for behavioral health treatment only? That's the what-if. And other, other cities in our country do that. So that is one of our challenges, to look at that and the mental health advisory.
Hit the button, Mr. Dennehan.
I'm sorry, I must have pushed it. That other communities are doing that, we're looking at so that it could take care of the behavioral health issue that began the call in the first place. And that, and that is critical. And so we're dealing with that, and we have met with the monitor. We now have a memorandum of understanding agreement with the city of Cleveland to take on this responsibility. So I think that it goes to reducing the number of persons jailed, which would be great if we could get to those that have behavioral health issues and get them treatment. We don't have a complete continuum of care in our system, and I recognize that. I wish I could stand here and tell you that. So, and there are broken parts. And those broken parts many times begin with the first call. And what happens after that? What happens after that is sometimes evidence. We hear from police officers say, well, we stopped, we picked them up last week, and we're back here again this week, or even the same night with the same, same problem. So with this engagement, I believe that we can make a difference in the training, but also providing other opportunities for officers. And I went off a little bit further on than I planned to, but I think those are some of the things that we are doing that would possibly, that you may see a request in the future, and I hope that we could do it within the budget that we have. And I wanted to mention something else to you. We have maintained an extraordinarily low administrative cost, which is important because the more we take low cost, the more we can put money into services. Before the, at the consolidation, the two boards had 92 people. When we consolidated, we brought it to 63. Today, it's 43, 41 full-time and two part-time. And we haven't, in the last year, a person retired and we hired a part-time person. So we're maintaining that. Additionally, we signed a, another contract with our lease, and we reduced it another approximately $50,000 a year. Before we consolidated, we were paying almost $900,000 a year. With the new lease, we're paying $350,000 a year. Now we're paying about $100,000 a year. So we are aggressively holding that line on our administrative costs because it's critical that we get the money into the services. And, and so when we saw the reduction of 6.7 million, quite frankly, I was surprised. And I heard two things come out of that. The first was that Medicaid, that Medicaid expansion can absorb that. Well, Medicaid expansion has yet to do that, at least not for our county. And in fact, it's lessened the amount of money we received. And that the county is doing other things that can be, that can be absorbed. And those other things I heard was housing and employment. Well, housing is special in that, are they providing medical behavioral health services? I don't think so. Are they providing recovery beds? I don't think so. And are they providing those services specially designed for the male Leo? I don't think so. They are partners. We are partners with them.
Mr. Dennehan, the question had to do with hearing. You're going off. I'm trying to understand exactly where you're.
Okay, I was beginning to talk about the proposal.
Okay.
So I'll just talk about the proposal.
We have got some members that have some questions.
Okay.
I just wanted to, so I just want us to, members to ask specific questions, and the answers be, be as specific and germane to the questions being answered.
Thank you.
So Ms. Conwell, do you have, do you have another? Okay, so Mr. Miller, then Mr. Gallagher.
Mr. Chairman and Director, I appreciate your coming down and the detailed presentation, and, and I say unequivocally that we absolutely need these services and that, that I'm, I'm prepared to support a 100% restoration. But that having been said, there is one thing that is a huge problem for me. And what that is, is the state disparity. I know about formula fights. The money is divided up, and there's winners and losers, and I know that states complain when they only get 90% back in transportation money on the money that they send to Washington. But in this, in this case, we're getting less than 10% of what we're entitled to. If, if it were even done just on a population prorated basis, it would be another, over $5 million, and it would, it would cover more than 80% of the reduction that we're talking about. And I know we've been fighting this fight for 10, 10 or 20 years, and, and it hasn't changed. And Mr. Chairman, Director, I'm, my question is, is what would it take to, to, to change the dynamics so that we can do what we haven't been able to do in 10 or 20 years and, and get this fixed and get a reasonable allocation?
Mr. Chairman, to Councilman Miller, I wish I could give you a very definitive answer. Public policy sets that the legislature authorizes the money and the executive branch distributes it. And the legislature has not, has stayed away from the distribution of it, which is the executive's role. So it sort of begins there. And, and the, the, the lack of equity as it relates specifically to mental health, the equity is not there on the alcohol and drug side and a per capita basis, but it's on the mental health side, which is significant. And we have actually brought it to the legislature in a number of ways, and brought it to the administrator in a number of ways, and brought it publicly to a number of ways. And there does not seem to be any movement, and I would, I continue to grapple with this problem, going to Columbus and, and doing what I can from talking to these people and raising cane. So we haven't been successful, but it's there, and it's real, and we have to face it. And I ask that you give us that support.
Well, Mr. Chairman, Director, I certainly will give that support, and, and I would just relate one thing from my experience down in the legislature, which is that the, that the biennial budget bill is typically somewhere between 4, 4 and 10,000 pages long, filled with, filled with, with all kinds of policy provisions. And, and even though the legislature has, has tended not to get involved in the distribution of these funds, there is absolutely nothing that prevents them from doing so. They, they wade into the weeds way farther than this on all kinds of stuff, and so, so it, it could be fixed at the administrative level or the legislative level or both.
I'd urge my colleagues to have their questions directly to the presentation, and the answers be responded to in as concise a manner as possible. Mr. Miller, do you have any further questions?
I do not. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Gallagher, then Mr. Jones.
And you come here for 100% restoration. Did I hear Mr. Osicki asking for more?
He said contemplating. The three positions, we're talking about the expansion, three, if you're talking about the expansion of three positions, we want to be candid and let you know that agencies do change and grow with responsibilities, and that with our statewide shares program, we are sharing the cost of one-third for a person to represent Cuyahoga County in this new program. Because of the Medicaid expansion and the number of complaints coming in, we're looking at a part-time person to address that. And, and in terms of the crisis intervention training, we don't know if that's going to require a cost, and quite frankly, I don't know if it should come from here. That's, that's something we perhaps should look with the state. So, so we wanted to point out in the areas of, of our possible expansions, that we still have needs. And if we received extra money, I wanted to point out where we would want to direct them.
Well, I would, I would just concentrate on what's on the table.
Okay.
We've had many folks come into us with visions of grandeur and expansion, but they just stayed with what was, what we're dealing with here, so I would.
Well, I'm not asking for any more.
Right. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Any other questions? Mr. Jones and Mr. Schron.
Bill, you mentioned some of the, and the detoxification services, one, how important they are, how life-saving they are, and the accomplishments of going from 21 days in 2014, you've been able to improve that to provide service within 12 days for this year. Your goal is for three days for 2016. Is that, is that targeted goal, considering the way it's presented, the cuts to the budget, or is that after full restoration?
That is full restoration. Mr. Chairman, Councilman.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Schron, then Ms. Brown.
Thank you. You finished off with the three pages of proposed administrative cuts, and you're listing, are you telling this council that every one of these programs that you're concerned about the cuts is operating at maximum efficiency, maximum effectiveness, and there is no room for improvement that would show a financial improvement in the results?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, and to the Councilman.
So there's no room for improvement? Nothing can yield a dollar, even a dollar savings?
As a manager, I admit that we all could change and look at it. We have to start somewhere, and if we start with a lower amount, we're not going to make it. The other thing is, I was asked three years ago to suggest what our budget ought to be, and I put down 20 million, and then 15 million, and we got 5 million. And we're trying to work within economically the best that we can. And we do track all the costs. If a provider is not spending that amount of money.
My question was short.
Then we do not give it to them the next year, and we cut it off sometime in the year so we could give it somewhere else. So I think your point is well-taken, that we could go through every program, everything we do, and probably find something. I don't know what that something would be, but we have to start somewhere. And I feel that starting with a $6.7 million cut, it can be devastating to what we do.
Okay, so at least we have an agreement that there is something that could be done. Whether the 6.7 is the right number is the only question.
I would agree, I would agree to that to any budget that I've ever submitted, that we always, I think that we have to start somewhere. And this is what we're presenting to start. And I think it would be wrong if I said here, okay, let's take 20 off here and 10 off there. I, I suggest that we sat down and talked about every one of these figures, and with the hope that we could get a 100% funding.
Okay, let's assume that you have to live with the cuts that the administration's proposed. Are any of your programs currently being administered where there's also similar services being provided someplace else in this county by another organization that could be actually picking up or doing that responsibility, or where we're actually duplicating it currently right now?
I don't believe we're duplicating it.
Not a single thing you're doing on this entire list is being duplicated in the county?
Well, I don't know what anybody else is doing, youth crisis stabilization, going down here. Who's providing residential beds?
Okay.
I don't believe anybody is. And if they, if they are, then I would be glad to talk about it.
Okay. That's, I guess that's the question I'm asking, is, is any of this being duplicated? And we've been talking about this from the time we came on council, about the duplication in many areas out there. So my, my third question is, you created a vehicle for shared services with other counties? I assume that was done with the intent of saving money if you're going to be using shared services.
Yes, sir.
Is that quantified in, is that quantified in your budget reduction? The shared services valuation for vendors?
We just went live this past week with that program, so we're just beginning to experience it. And our hope is that we will have a program that is not only for billing, but for research purposes and accounting purposes, so that on a daily basis, we know by their billings what they're doing in accordance with their contract.
You heard the prosecutor. So before you went into the shared services, did you have a number or a goal that you were trying to achieve by reduced costs?
I think that we had. I think that we've never had this service before. So-
I understand that, but you didn't start a project without some objective in mind, I hope.
Mr. Chair, Mr. Schron, it would be the misspent cost of holding providers accountable that we would have to spend, for example, the $200,000 we spent for evaluation. We would not have to do that. There's a savings right there.
Okay. What is the number you put on it before you started spending money to create the shared services program?
I don't recall it right now. I will get it for you.
Okay. I appreciate that. Actually, I appreciate if it gets over there because that might help satisfy your cut number that the administration is looking at. Thank you.
I'll come back.
So Frank Breckner wanted to remind me that the share will make us do things better and be more efficient and get that cost savings, and I will get that for you.
On this, Ms. Brown, before you begin, Mr. Miller had a follow-up to this point.
Yeah. You said earlier that you had to reduce your budget from 46 million to 43 million because of state cuts. Doesn't that mean that you've already had to figure out how to squeeze a $3 million cut into what you're providing?
Yes, that was going to be in my notes for my next comment, but you picked it up. And it's actually absolutely right. We presented a $43 million budget to the board last night, which was $3 million less than last year. And as explained, a great part of that is the misunderstanding and the cuts on realization of Medicaid expansion.
Okay. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Ms. Brown.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Danahan, you, one of your, I think, members spoke about a pilot program for temporary job placement services for individuals who fail drug testing. Which employers are privy to that program?
Which employers? I don't know the names of employers, but I do know we have some people that are working. It's also, for two things, it's also to get jobs for those that are mentally addicted. The markup on the temporary help firm rate is about 45%. Since we're nonprofit, our markup would be about 15%. And you would have an advantage of going to employers to get jobs for the mentally ill and addicted that are in recovery. So it's brand new. It's just started off, and I know we have nine people working in the program. And the whole idea-
I guess my question then would be, do you work with the drug testing agencies then to offer this program to people who do not pass the drug test?
Yes. This program is run out of recovery resources, which is one of our agencies.
Okay. And then what is the cost of the program and how many people have been served?
It's $50,000 for this first year. And we are, we hope that they start off with nine people working, and I hope that that will continue to increase.
Can you estimate of the $50,000 that is for the program, how many people that may potentially fail the drug test will be served? That's what I meant by the number served.
We're hoping over the year, at least 30 to 40 people. The other thing is, it could be self, the program could be self-sustaining. It's one of the few programs. Since they will be billing the provider for the services, they will be making the money as if the temporary help firm will be making. So my vision is that if it's successful, it would not have to be funded in the future.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Just to provide some perspective, the reason I wanted to have the questions in advance of you reviewing how the cuts would impact you is because I view those as almost two separate issues. So now if you proceed with, you want to discuss the, how the cuts are going to impact the service delivery, is that correct?
The proposal?
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Buddhist contacted me about three weeks ago and attended a meeting with two board members. And he explained why he made the cuts and he gave me the opportunity for me to share with him the, our view of that and the consequences. And at that point, he made a proposal that would take, remove dependency children that are in custody at DCFS and that we would provide services to that children and families. And if that happened, there would be an arrangement made that the dollars saved should the child have stayed to emancipation, that we would be paid those dollars on a quarterly basis. So that was the beginning of the discussion. And when we looked at the dollars, they were very intriguing in that they were between six and seven million dollars. And so we asked for information and the director, Tom Pisto, provided that for us. And so as we received, I think, all of the information from the individual file reviews last Wednesday or Thursday. And I had to sort out what all this meant. And I believe what it meant was that if I agreed to it, that I'd have to come up with a number that it would save. And that that would be the agreement. And the more my staff and I developed into it, the more we saw a number of things occurring. There were 56 cases that were reviewed out of 149 that had the potential. And we found that not all of them would apply. Those that were 16 and 17 of that, there were, I think, 21, a good number, that 16 and 17. When they're 18, they're gone. So that didn't seem like a, those eliminated the number of the discussion. Then we found those that had been for a long, long time. And it created a situation that we had to ask, why are they there? And what is the condition of the families? And are the families able to take these children back? And we don't think all of them would be able to take them back. And nor would we want to suggest that they take them back. And that the system represented here had done an incredible job in finding them homes in the very first place. And dealing with Mr. Pisto and his outstanding staff, we did our analysis and find that, well, we've got a low amount of people that would qualify for this, which meant that if I could figure out two things, which I can't, is the child able to go? Would it be the best interest for the child to go? And there is assumption that the child is not receiving mental health services, and I don't think that's a good assumption. The other assumption is that in this business, it's not the mental health services that is, it is critical, but it's also critical for the wraparound services. And the wraparound services you pay for, it's not covered under Medicaid. And that, for a child that is in trouble, if we can, could cost us not, as much as $106,000 a year, which we would have to pay. And the deal would be, we would pay the upfront cost. We would first have to get a provider. Now, we're not a service organization. By law, we can't provide services. We contract for services. So the services that we would get are already providing services for DCFS. And so we would have to pay an expense for that service. First, we'd have to find out by going to out of county or out of state, whether the child would fit. That's a cost. We would have to come back and find out if there's family available and whether the family is right and what services do those need. And so first I want to say, I don't think this is a bad idea. I think it's a great idea. And I commend Mr. Buddhist for thinking like that on behalf of children. I think it's a great idea. But I have to look at the consequences of the budget. And I can't, and I explained this to Mr. Buddhist, can't say how much money that this would save so that, and then agree to cuts, where we've already cut our budget by 3 million. So I came to the position that I want to offer a pilot program that would start in January and look at those that are coming out immediately and continue looking at this list that they gave us and see what can be done and have the time to discuss the logistics of something like this with a provider and other people. This is just a matter of days in this evaluation. And by me rejecting his proposal does not mean I think it's a bad plan. I think it was, it was set with good merit and good intentions. And I think that we gave it our best intention, but at this time, I can't accept it because it would be detrimental to the Adams Board budget. And my board has told me, don't do anything that's detrimental to the budget, but work with it. And I told them, I think it's a good plan. I still think it's a good plan. But to jump right in there and have this agreement for our Adams Board budget, which already has a $3 million hit, I think that, I think it would be detrimental. And I regretfully, regretfully, because I would like to do something. I ran that agency 10 years ago, and I understand the dedication and commitment of those social workers when they're working with families. And I understand the foster care and the adoption system. So I'm not a rookie at this. And I got to compliment Mr. Tom Pisto, who has taken over this job and really addressed it extraordinarily well. And I have the highest regard for the social workers of DCFS. At this time, I do not think it works in the best interest of the Adams Board. And I would like to propose in January that, given that if our budget is whole, I would hope that, that we start out a program like that. And if there is money saved and we're made whole for what we do, then put it in transitional youth. Because we talk about our youth growing up and we talk about seniors, but the group that's missing is transitional youth. When they're 18, 19, and 20, they're in trouble in this county. And we find them in prison and in the hospital or in trouble. And we've got to give that some attention. And I would think that setting up a transitional youth program that deals with employment, that deals with housing, deals with education, if that could be a modified savings, then, and if we're made whole, then why not put it there? And that would be our proposal. Or any other place that the administrator, the executive sees fit. And so I think it can work. And I would love to work that venture out with the administration. So that's my comment.
Okay. Thank you. So the discussion we're talking about now is the proposal from the administration for you to absorb, provide the provisioning of additional services with the budget of about $6.8 million, correct?
I'm sorry?
So the discussion right now, just so I'm clear, because there are two questions that members have, the discussion right now is the executive's recommendation that you absorb additional services with an additional budget appropriation, correct?
Yes, it's $439 million.
Okay. All right. Mr. Jones and Ms. Simon.
Again, you've been asked to absorb seven services for roughly $7 million. I believe the county has paid more than $7 million for these services over the years, in the neighborhood of seven, but maybe closer to nine at times over the years. And let me make sure I understand what is being asked of you. The county has provided residential and treatment to maybe in the neighborhood of 300 children?
It's, in this particular case, it's 149.
Okay. 149 children?
Yes.
And what you're being asked is that these children be taken out of residential treatment and gone from the county's responsibility to back to the home and you provide medical treatment?
We provide all the services that are necessary. These children are not at risk.
Not at risk.
And they really shouldn't be out in these homes. And we don't disagree with that. We actually agree with it. But the DCFS gets, if you will, stuck with it and it's a difficult problem.
So my question to you is, if these children are asked to go back to the homes, to the homes of their parents, the question is, are they ready at this time to go back to the home with their parents?
And Mr. Chair and Councilman Jones, that's precisely the challenge in that many of the parents in the beginning did not want the children. And many of the parents may want them, but may not be capable. And we shouldn't send the children to them because of drugs and other things. So that, and we don't know that. And so we don't know which ones are ready. And that's not, that would take a great amount of research. And if they can't take it, what about other family mothers, relatives? That information is not available. And if that's not it, what about other providers in the area? And they wouldn't be out of county or out of state if the other providers in the area could handle it in the first place.
So the county has maintained that responsibility over the years of keeping the children in residential. We sent them out of state at times. That has been costly, but it was necessary. We've seen in this home, in this chamber, children who were sent to Pennsylvania, but were served effectively, reunited with their parents. And we've had mothers here who were very grateful. I couldn't have my child in the home at that moment, but I'm happy to be re-unified now. So we've seen those scenarios. So really, my question is, is to you also, who makes the decision as to whether that child stays in the home or goes into this new proposed budget? Do you have final say on that call or does the county-
No, I think that will be a joint decision by DCFS and us. If they, if we pull it out and we say, well, this is a, this is a good fix, and you just discussed it, I think that we don't have, I don't think we'd have authority. It would have to be given the authority by DCFS.
So DCFS would have the final call?
Yeah. I believe they would. And I think what they're saying in this proposal, they would trust us in this environment.
Okay. But your recommendation is this is not in the best interest of the Adams Board?
At this point in time, with this proposal, as it relates to our full budget. But I think that there is a case to be made for a pilot program that we could work with.
On a smaller scale, maybe not $7 million, not all, but to figure out what works?
Well, it would have to be on a smaller scale because not all 149 children, by first evaluation, less than 50% would qualify according to DCFS. And we got to that 50%. A number of them were 18 already. There's one that's 19, and one is 20, and one is 22. So they wouldn't qualify. And there's a number of high risk, real high risk, that would be challenging at best. And there's a number of high-risk, real high-risk, that would be challenging at best. But there are, as we pointed out in our review, there's a number that are under probation at juvenile court, there's a number that are newly placed, and so those would be good numbers to work with. And that's, we come up with a number of 23 that we think that we could work with, but we don't know if that 23 at home would work. So it becomes a smaller number. When we're talking $7 million, we were talking 149. Now we're talking a lesser, far lesser number, less than 10%.
So it sounds to me as if we really need to focus on truly evaluating which children need to remain in residential and which one have the opportunity to come out of that and return to the homes, and those are the ones that, that population is one that could be better served.
Well, it's also, should the child go home? It might be a threat to the family.
One question, is Director Pisto here today?
He is, and let me just provide a little direction right now. So Ms. Simon has a question. After her question, we're going to recess for lunch, and at that time, we'll come back. And Mr. Pristow, unless Mr. Danahan has any additional comments, Mr. Pristow will provide the administration's justification for the reductions.
Thank you.
Ms. Simon.
Thank you so much. I don't see that there's, this is unreasonable to go forward with a pilot program that makes total sense to me than to risk all the other services and people who need treatment for a risky project. So I want to know, it seems I heard this from you, that your budget, if it were to be restored, would be able to cover, obviously, this pilot program that would address approximately 23 children?
Yes, it would be a smaller program, but it'd also take those programs, those children would be new coming into a program. So I think it would be containable, and I think that it's, because of what it is, that it could be a good pilot.
Thank you, and I support the pilot concept, as well as, you know, potentially looking at savings going into transitional youth programs. I think that's a place where we really need to focus as these youth, especially the girls end up in human trafficking, and I think that we need to shine a larger spotlight on that. So I support a pilot and a restoration of the, what we should be giving you.
Thank you very much.
Okay. If there are no further questions on this point, what we'll do right now is recess. We'll be back here at 1 o'clock, and at that time, if Mr. Danahan has any further comments, we'll entertain those. Otherwise, we'll go right into Mr. Pristow's presentation, and then obviously, Mr. Danahan, you'll have an opportunity to respond to each point.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.